All right, thank you for that. So flags will fly half mast till Monday. The funeral will be on Monday, probably early in the morning. We get not really to watch it. So thank you all for that. All right. The attendance at the start of the meeting is 100% with Councilor Jolly Virchell.
Sure. Speaking of tradition, we'll maintain one that the September 12, 2022 agenda be adopted as presented.
Thank you. Any additions? All right, call for the vote. That is unanimous. All right. I have no appointments that I know of. We're good. Okay. Then we're going to get right into agenda item number 4.1, which is Edmonton Global Investment Plan Effectiveness. We have Mr. Erickson, Mike Erickson with us. Are you doing a presentation? And then I noticed we have.
Yeah, I was going to say I think that they would probably reference to start off.
Sure. Yeah. I didn't know if you were here just to answer questions or if you had a quick presentation yourself.
Do a presentation.
That'd be great.
15, 20 minutes?
Five.
How fast I can go.
I'm sure there'll be 15 or 20 minutes worth of questions after.
So.
Thanks so much for the invitation to be here. And I'll just comment that it's a much more enjoyable commute to come from Woodlands to St. Albert City Hall versus going to downtown. Many of you will know that I live in St. Albert, have been a volunteer in St. Albert, know the economics of St. Albert quite well. I spent six years also as the chair, past chair of St. Albert's Economic Sustainability Advisory Board. And I've also spent a long time involved with St. Albert's Chamber, both as a board director and currently on their advisory council, sorry, Government Affairs Council. And we also have Sarah Teet here with us. She's our new vice president, Strategic Partnerships. So we'll kind of quickly run through a presentation and get into some meat questions for you. So again, really our purpose is we're a regional body that you are the shareholder and owner of, along with the other 14 municipalities. I'll speak primarily just about the results that we had over the last couple of years. So since we've been created, really since I'd say the spring of 2019 is when we started really being up and running. Undered over $1.9 billion of investment.
Don't do that, it'll get stuck in my head.
All right, we can get started. Sorry, I'll call the meeting to order for the standing committee of the whole for September 12, 2022. Before we start, it's nice to see some somber colors in the room because of course we all got some news last week of the Queen passing and this is our first official meeting since then. On Friday, I had a meeting at Mayor Edmonton's office and their city manager made the point of saying the Queen was about service, so because there's lots of considerations, she would be cancelling everything for the whole week, the whole 10 days. We're continuing to meet because I think it's important, it's hard to reschedule and stuff that we do. And so I just think we should just take a moment to self reflect, we'll have a quick moment of silence. What the Queen meant to Commonwealth, what meant Canada and to our role as elected officials, so just a couple of minutes of silence for our. All right, thank you for that. So flags will fly half mast till Monday, is that? The funeral will be on Monday. Probably early in the morning, we get never really to watch it. So thank you all for that. All right. The attendance at the start of the meeting is 100% with councillor Jolly Virchell. Councillor Mackay, if you'd like.
Sure, the, speaking of tradition, well, that the September 12, 2022 agenda be adopted as presented.
Thank you. Any additions? All right, call for the vote. That is unanimous. All right. I have no appointments that I know of. We're good, okay. Then we're going to get right into agenda item number 4.1, which is Edmonton Global Investment Plan Effectiveness. We have Mr Erickson, Mike Erickson with us, where do you go, Curious? Are you doing a presentation and then I noticed we have.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that they would probably reference to start off.
Sure, yeah. I didn't know if you were here just to answer questions or if you had a quick presentation yourself.
Do a presentation, that would be.
Go ahead, that'd be great.
Fifteen, twenty minutes?
Five.
Five. How fast I can go.
I'm sure there'll be fifteen or twenty minutes worth of questions after, so.
Okay, thanks so much for the invitation to be here. And I'll just comment that it's a much more enjoyable commute to come from Woodlands to St. Albert City Hall versus going to downtown. Many of you will know that I live in St. Albert, have been a volunteer in St. Albert. Know the economics of St. Albert quite well, I spent six years on. So as the Chair, past Chair of St. Albert's Economic Sustainability Advisory Board. And have also spent a long time involved with St. Albert's Chamber, both as a Board Director and currently on their Advisory Council. Sorry, Government Affairs Council. And we also have Sarah Teet here with us. She's our new Vice President, Strategic Partnerships. So we'll kind of quickly run through a presentation. And get into some meat questions for you. So again, really, our purpose is we're a regional body that you are the shareholder and owner of, along with the other fourteen municipalities. I'll speak primarily just about the results that we had over the last couple of years. So since we've been created, really since, I'd say the spring of 2019 is when we started really being up and running. Landed over $1.9 billion of investment into the region, that's about 23 final investment decisions. That's created right now about 2,700 construction jobs and 600 operating jobs. And you can see the breakdown there by sector. I'll just comment that Toronto Global, which is the largest regional body in that country doing what we do. They've landed about $1.7 billion in the six years that they've existed. So the fact that we've hit 1.9 in three, I think is quite good. Just to give you a bit of a sense of the breakdown, that the first one is in millions. The center is jobs and then the number of final investment decisions. And just to talk a little bit about more on the St. Albert side, really what we're doing is developing an economic strategy for the region. We're collaborating with your teams, the work we do hand in hand with Mike and the team here in St. Albert is really critical. And it's very important to have a strong local economic development team to work with what we're doing around the world. So I think we've got a very strong and fruitful partnership. In terms of St. Albert, we have two deals in progress with St. Albert that we've had a hand in, we've had a touch in. Mike and his team are really leading this work, but began or had relationship with us. There was one other one that St. Albert was shortlisted for. It looks like that's now going to end up someplace else in the region, not St. Albert. But I think it's good to know that you had a really strong stake and strong case in a plant protein fractionation facility that we worked on.
That one's going to end up within the region, so?
It should end up in Sturgeon County. But you were really in a good place there, ended up that they had a better facility site match. And some additional knock on investments that look like they're going to line up better in Sturgeon County. But it's plant protein fractionation and really value added agriculture in particular is an area where St. Albert has some very good strengths. One of the issues with St. Albert with that site is it didn't have investment ready land on the timeline that they needed. Where Sturgeon has a facility that it's already there with the rail spur connected to it. So in 18 months or so, that situation will change for St. Albert when your Lakeview District opens up. Again, really what we're about here is hunting as a pack, the whole region united, going out into the world to land investment. When we look at opportunities coming forward in St. Albert. You know, the largest bulk of your opportunities likely will be in that Lakeview Business District. It doesn't mean that's your only ones, but that's going to give you a significant advantage. There are, in the region, there's not a lot of areas that have investment letting you ready to land. St. Albert's going to have a significant amount of this quite soon. And again, the sectors that we think you've got some really strategic advantages is that agribusiness, especially value added agriculture. And global supply chain logistics, and you're already seeing investments in those spaces. With the Uline as well as Jureline, because Jureline is both a manufacturing and leveraging the supply chain logistics capability. Just on ag, we're really seeing with global warming and other things happening that already there's a microclimate around the Edmonton metropolitan region. And the value proposition for investments here in ag is actually getting stronger with that. And you can see on this map that kind of reddish area, that's really prime land. Very, very highly for, one of the advantages here is that we also have abundance of water. So there's some really interesting things here that make this a region that should see significant growth. And it's this mix of rural, urban, industrial that comes together. Because again, what we're really needing to do is move more into value added. So it's not just about growing grain and selling grain off to the rest of the world, it's how do we then do things like biofuels? How do we do nutraceuticals? How do we make packaged goods and foods? So there's a whole number of things we're looking to add in, and that mix of rural, industrial, urban, it's a pretty unique value proposition here. The other one, we look at that supply chain logistics, you know, St. Albert's connection to the empty Hyundai. The routes north, south, east and west really matter, connection to the Villeneuve Airport certainly matters. And the fact that you've got CN moving right through the community with the ability to do rail services, it's very attractive. But it's not just about what's happened here to the region, it's this region's connections to places like the Port-au-Prince Rupert. Which is North America's deepest water port and it's the closest major port in North America to Asia. We're seeing as much as a 29 day time advantage to move goods from Asia through Rupert to the Edmonton region. Compared to places like Los Angeles or Vancouver. So Rupert is going to be the second busiest port in Canada within about a year. And its growth trajectory is really quite, quite fast. And then the CN rail line that connects from Rupert to the Edmonton region is actually the flattest of the route. So the path through the mountains doesn't go over the same peaks that it does through Calgary. Or even, you know, coming out of LA. So it's far more, it's far faster and it's more economically and environmentally sustainable. So cheaper on gas to get into places like Chicago. So it's amazing, you can actually move product faster from Chicago through the Edmonton region to Asia through here versus Vancouver, Calgary, Los Angeles to Chicago. So it's cheaper, it's faster, and time is money. Again, we've got some real advantages through ship and train. And then our northern location for airlines is also a really strategic advantage. Circle polar routes make the flying distance only four minutes difference between Edmonton and Shanghai compared to Vancouver and Shanghai. And it's, we've got way more land around our airports here than any other airport in the country. So again, that makes it far more attractive. The federal government last month made the largest investment ever in Alberta's history, $100 million to expand 2,000 new acres of space around the Edmonton International Airport, really for that cargo and logistics piece. The work that we've been doing across the region on the Regional Air Services Opportunity Fund is not only bringing in new passenger fares, but also new cargoes. We've got an announcement coming soon with the direct connection to China on cargo through air. And half of all cargo that's moved in the world moves in the body of a passenger plane. So those connections to places like the Netherlands and Amsterdam are also really helping our region make connections to other parts of the world. So that again, just to layer together, it's, it's the value added ag, it's, you know, manufacturing, all these things that add value. That can get into the body of planes from our region out to the world, we're also going to really increase our GDP. And that's about as fast as I could do it, hopefully that was close.
Where's the biggest port? Said Rupert was the second biggest?
Vancouver.
Thank you.
And we also have a very good connections to Vancouver, but Prince Rupert is, we really consider it the Edmonton region's port.
Yeah, I was just looking in the map, it makes sense actually. Hey, questions?
I have one question, in relation to the Netherlands, you're talking about a lot of agribusiness there and they're suffering a lot of issues with their farming and protesting going on there now, how is that going to affect the connection?
If anything, it probably makes, makes our job a little bit easier. You know, one of the things that's amazing with the Netherlands, even though it's a very small country, they actually get more TDP, more value out of their value added agriculture than all of Canada does. So really what we're trying to do is learn from their example. And they bring in products around the world, do value added, they move them on to the rest of the world. So having some slowdowns and some challenges there actually may make it easier to get Canadian products into Europe.
What challenges?
Well, they're the fertilizer and they're trying to cut them back thirty, they're trying to paddle there, so there's a lot going on.
So it's a big challenge.
So, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I just recall that back in the beginning of my term, well, like all nine months ago. One of the first presentations from Edmonton Global was around awareness, you'd done a survey around kind of the just general awareness of Edmonton as all of these key factors and benefits that we've laid out. And at that time, I recall you said you were going to do another survey at a kind of an international awareness level. Has that taken place and have we seen a awareness of all of our good things? Exco upper?
Great question. So, so just for those of me who don't remember that we did a survey at the very beginning of Edmonton Global that it was around 82% of global site selectors not only had never considered the Edmonton region, never heard of the Edmonton region. We, we are hoping to do another set of surveys, January, February of this coming year. In part because we're coming out with a new regional narrative. This fall is in conjunction with Forward Slash, the Economic Summit that we're hosting on September 28. But already we're seeing some pretty significant differences. When I first started Edmonton Global in 2019, we had a hard time having Canada's Trade Commissioner Service kind of pick up our message and kind of work with us. You know, now we've got them reaching out to us on a pretty regular basis. We had, I think, more than 20 countries that the Trade Commissioner Service brought to the region for the Canadian Hydrogen Convention back in the spring. We've got close to that many coming next week for the Carbon Capture Canada event that we're co-hosting. And we've got actually a fairly large group of site selectors coming in this week. So it's, it's really more anecdotal, but we can certainly see right now that it's very different from what it was in 2019.
Yep.
And I think the numbers that Mike will present later, if you talk through your piece, don't include the site selectors that are about to come here this week. Some of the other activities that have happened.
But, because I think, you know, we've got a great story to tell, but just that awareness factor that, well, really, it really has to kind of take hold, right?
Absolutely. And again, if you allow me just to add a touch, it's, it was challenging in the beginning because we wouldn't even get in the long list for a project. Because if you don't feel that a place exists, how do you put them on a list? So now I think we're getting onto more long lists, and if we're on a long list, we think we can, we can earn our way into the shortlist just by outworking people.
Yeah, okay. At one point, you mentioned Forward Slash, so at one point, I'll go to questions, but I want you to expand and make sure everybody's aware of what's going on, make sure it's still on the calendar.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Charlie, next question.
Just another question, you had mentioned the federal funding for farming near the airport, would that be government farming or private?
Apologies, that is for logistics, that's to build out 2,000 acres of land to get it investment ready for expanding the Edmonton International Airport's cargo handling facilities. And value added agriculture will be one of the primary pieces that's, that's sent out from our application.
And just how do you decipher what the province is working on compared to what you're working on?
We work really closely with Invest Alberta and J E I, as well as Alberta Agriculture, so we've got a very close relationship. So it's, it's really kind of more through the partnership pieces, I don't know if you want to call it, I'm not sure.
It's, it's a matter of reach out and really understanding. You have to have a close touch point and understand what your key mandates are, your initiatives are aligned. Part of that we're doing through a trilateral, trilateral partnership with Calgary, Winnipeg as well, that's the provinces for to combine us together. I think we all know Canada is very small in the world, not to mention Alberta or the Edmonton region. So as a province, we still have to collaborate as much as we want to compete with Calgary. You know, we have to first get it into Alberta and then we can show our strengths to Calgary.
So I, just as part of our presentation from administration, they contrast the various economic development regions. In Calgary, they spend 12.8 million per year and then they have a $100 million investment fund. Does the Edmonton region, our region, have a similar sort of investment fund?
We don't, we don't. And one of the things that's, so when that fund was started, Jim Gray, who, you know, was the founder of Hunter Exploration. He's really the, the energy behind the new version of the Calgary stampede. He created that by basically having a number of businesses come together to the city of Calgary and make the argument that to grow their economy, to attract international investment, especially in tech, that was a piece that would help them be competitive. So they built that about four years ago and it's been really, really effective. It's gotten Calgary on the map, especially for that international investment in tech. Our region doesn't have anything similar. My understanding is the city of Edmonton is considering something like that, they may bring forward to the region to discuss. But at the moment, we don't have anything like that.
I may add to that point, keep in mind, Calgary Economic Development also includes their tourism and film and several others. Where here we have Innovate Edmonton, we have Explore Edmonton, so we're a little bit fragmented on that front. However, we have very close working relationships with Explore Edmonton and Innovate on many different levels, on working committees, on different working tasks, so that we can collaborate and pull our efforts. I think it's, it's, it's coming at everything from two angles, you know, you have, we have in plain language, our sales team out there showing the world what we have. But at the same time, in our, in our own backyard, we have to build a investment friendly ecosystem, right? With the VCs, with the governments and private industry, working together to show businesses that we're a cohesive unit and.
I'll just add that that also includes, we work really closely with Alberta's Industrial Heartland, with all of the chambers in the region, including St. Albert Chamber. We've got a fairly regular touch point with NAVI here in St. Albert, so it's really trying to pull all the assets in the region together.
Yep, thank you.
So I'm just going to talk about the contributions, so it's gone up substantially since we started, we agreed to this, we started at 23,000 or now up to 243,000. Are we projecting to maintain that or are we projecting to continue to increase that contribution requirement?
The level you're at now is the, the level that, it was a couple of years ago, all municipalities agreed to bump us up to a kind of a new normal. Every year during the Edmonton Global Shareholder Meeting, there's a chance to set a budget. And it creates a three year window of what the budget is. So you certainly have the opportunity to increase or decrease that each year, but it's a regional decision that does that.
What's the projected for the next two to three years right now?
It's exactly what it is this year.
It's flatlining right now? And the decision for that's being done in November or when is?
That happens each spring at our AGM.
Okay, so as of right now, going forward, we still have it at flatlining?
Correct.
Okay. Councillor Jolly, did you go to the AGM this year?
Did not.
I don't remember myself.
Just to touch, there's a funding for, it's based on assessment and population. So there's a chance it could fluctuate slightly based off your own numbers, but it should be roughly that amount.
We have a lot of equalized assessment here. I had one more question. Oh, go ahead. Yeah, so I realize that there hasn't been a lot going to St. Albert in general, I realize the region's large. But I'm also wondering, is it just because we don't have the Lakeview developed, is that, that really our bottleneck?
I would say that you, you do have two deals in process right now that I think you have very good odds of landing and finishing, Mike could certainly comment on that more directly than I can. Your ability to really take a giant leap forward though will come with like that. So it's not that you can't get investment, you certainly are and will continue. But you'll have a significant competitive advantage in the region once that opens up.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead, Ken.
Mine's just more around the mechanics of how you work together with our economic development area. And I guess, you know, just listening to that and listening to the questions and the comments, I mean, so walk me through physically, Mike or Chris, how, how do we work together, how do we get identified? You know, are we, like, are we truly meshed? Like, I'm just interested in how that actually works, like, I mean, are we dependent upon you notifying us or how do we get into the system? For lack of a better term.
We'll try to bat this back and forth a little bit. So it, it kind of depends on how they start. So often what happens with the larger international ones is that there'll be an inquiry that'll come in either through Global Affairs Canada or Invest in Canada. They'll identify regions in the country that they're interested in. Will then be notified of a request for information that might come. We'll reach out immediately to all of the economic development officers in the, in the region. Sometimes an investor will specify which ones they want to look at, in which case we follow the direction of the investor. Often it's broad, so we'll send out an information pack, something that's new, we've just started that I think has been effective. Is we'll also call a very urgent phone call to the region so we can answer questions quickly. Sometimes it has a very short turnaround, so getting information into the hands of videos quickly matters. Not every municipality handles it the same internally. But we then basically take the package that each municipality gives and we build a regional pitch back that has the overall population data, education levels, you know, sites that have been identified, value props at different municipalities. But it gives a really unified cohesive message back. And prior to that, we would often have, you know, 14 or 15 different pitches coming, often with contradictory data or points. So now it's a much more unified process. And then there's a back and forth with with that investor until they get to the point of a of a shortlist or even down to a to a site. And the closer it comes to a community, the more it shifts from us being point to the community being lead. But if the community needs data sets or support with anything, then we're basically part of their team to help with that. Is that fair?
Yeah, I would say that's a really good summary. I think once, once the the request for information reaches our municipality, we do our own assessment, do are, do we meet the requirements, the base level requirements? Do we have a building or the land available? Do we have the servicing capabilities for that requirement? When we are working with an active prospect, there is a, let's say, a semi-regular every couple of weeks or every couple of months, depending on where things are at. We do sort of share updates back and forth, where is this at? What's the next step for us? Make sure that we're working along the way and, yeah, I mean, other information connections to other grants. I know you sent me one just a couple of weeks ago, here's, here's a grant opportunity that might work with the prospect that you're actively working in with. So there is frequent back and forth on those active opportunities.
And I'll just add if that's if they're coming in kind of organically through, there's also ones that we proactively go out and 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 kind of are hunting for. And for those, you know, we're identifying opportunities in the region, opportunities where we think we can really compete to win. And as as that investor comes in, then we can start to modify the pitch based on where they can land. So that that plant protein one that I mentioned earlier was one that we proactively identified, went out and found. And we're on that one, we're competing with Kuala Lumpur and Dubai on the other two international occasions. But it was working directly with St. Albert about how do we get the most effective pitch to go after them? And for ones like that, often it's it's the first link in a chain of investments. Much like one of the the ones that we're looking here in St. Albert, that could unlock fertilizer, you know, other biofuels, some other potential things. So it's it's also trying to get ahead of how do we maximize that investment and use that as a lure for additional investments? And we'll do that kind of in conjunction.
Yeah, so I guess, thank you for that, I appreciate that extra little help. But at a granular level, once it gets in, I mean, like, how do, Mike, how do you work with the other economic development officers around? We're we're we have to be still competing in some form or fashion, but then how do you then work with the other economic development officers in the region to to bring us to the top for opportunities? Is it just around, again, the value proposition that we're trying to create or like, I mean, for example, the example we were just using, we were competing with Sturgeon, right? So how do we, like, how do we then bring ourselves into, like, learn from that or bring ourselves up or see what we're not missing or basically say, no, you picked the wrong location? Because we're still in competition really for investment.
Yeah.
If I may add to that, with every deal that is gonna, that is, that we're losing or winning in the region or outside of the region, we will be doing much more detailed postmortems to understand why each reason was chosen, why they chose us, why they didn't, and that information we shared at our general EDO meetings. Much more detailed analysis to learn from.
Yeah, I'm just worried, I mean, we're still, we, each one of the partners have an economic development office. Except for, I think, Edmonton, because now Edmonton Global is the economic development office, right? They have their own, they have Innovate, Innovate.
Actually, they have a, they have an entire team.
Do they have an in-house one? I apologize, and I thought they gave that one up. But I mean, so we're still competing regionally, we're still competing in relation to that. How do we work together so that we're still not? You know, how do, how are we still working together but also still kind of identifying that we're still out there trying to attract investment? Are we moving it more down to a smaller level, more of a local level, business levels? Or are we, how are we tying that into the bigger picture, I guess? I'm trying to, I'm trying to see whether or not we're like, is there redundancy or is there opportunity or are the regions really working together? Are your offices all working together or are we still competing?
I'll do my best here. I think, I think I understand where you're going, but I just want to make sure, so I
That's good, because then you can tell me.
There's two ways of looking at it, and maybe I'll just, I'll just sort of start with with one stream. So once an opportunity comes into a municipality, once, once we're actively working with that prospect, it it's it's really, I'd say, the majority of the work is on the municipality at the local level to to work with that effect. But at the same time, we're still working with our partners in the region, whether that's through Edmonton Global or directly. I think there's lots of opportunities, I mean, one that's probably easy for this council as well, where is is building a landing network. That's an example of something where we would, on a regular basis, talk to our regional colleagues to just understand what their plans are and and how we can potentially work together. So I think we do a bit of both, you know, on one hand, we'll work with a prospect and we're not communicating outside our organization on that active opportunity, it's it's quite confidential. But then when we're looking at positioning ourselves long-term or future opportunities, you know, we're always looking at how can we work better, whether it's even just getting data, regional labor studies is a good example of how we'll pool our resources together sometimes and go, okay, we know that our labor pool here is pretty regional, so it might make sense for three or four or the entire region to put our money together and conduct a labor study, because we'll all mutually benefit from that.
Okay. I'm just trying to just frame it in my own mind as to how we fit in, where we fit in, what we do and what we don't do. So I mean, that answers the question. I just want to make sure that we're not not either subjugating ourselves to something, another different process, and we're not losing out in a process because because the way that the it's calculated, I mean, our amount is still quite significant for our our community and are we getting? What I want to make sure is is we're getting value for the dollars we're contributing or should we better be putting them in another location? That's what I'm trying to answer.
If I could add a visual and let me know if you guys are on the same page with this. But if you picture that sales funnel, the widest part is probably Best Canada, Best Alberta, Edmonton Global, and we're probably the narrowest at municipal level, that sales funnel.
All right, no, that, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Labor pool means transit.
I mean, no, but it means, I mean, there's no doubt that M E I A success means our success. And there's no doubt that another community, we, you know, we have to, I'm just trying to make sure that we have a place in this system that where we can actually, can actually, I can actually then go to a resident and say, there's value for me putting in this amount of dollars. Because if I can't do that, then I have to reevaluate it and say, are we getting the best bang for the buck?
Another process that we're working through too is the C E D. I'm gonna ask, I think that's really
Yeah.
Something that they start, they're at the top end of it and then we do all the
Yeah, I mean, and I mean, there's no doubt that we would not have the leverage to go to Singapore, sorry, as much as you would love to go to Singapore, Mike. I mean, I mean, there's no doubt that there, for everything that Edmonton Global does and around getting the Edmonton region in in the news or out in the in there is the value, but I'm just trying to say that how do we fit into that chain is all, or whether we're Hopper or whatever analogy we want to look at. It might be bad because we always get chewed up on the other end, but
Well, I'd say that that, I mean, one of the challenges that our region has is that we're we're very small in a global context. So it's, you know, it's been next to impossible for the city of Edmonton to be recognized outside of the country. Region is also, it's very hard for us to be recognized outside of the a smaller community like a St. Albert or Spruce Grove or any of those, it's 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 almost insurmountable to our global scale. So when you start to put all of the assets in the industrial heartland in Oateson, St. Albert, and Sturgeon County and Airport, Edmonton, you start to put all those together. You know, our regional GDP is about one hundred and five billion, which is is getting close to what the GDP of of a Dubai is. Everybody knows Dubai, you know, again, almost no one's heard of the Edmonton region, so it's I think one of the big values is is that hunting is a pack and actually trying to build a narrative where we're in together. Explaining the values. And, you know, then also, if you're going out to, you know, to to try to get an investment in plant proteins, makes more sense to try to make that happen as as one unit versus having, you know, six or seven communities spending that money to go and try to go after it. So it's, you know, it is the, it's leveraging and pulling that together.
Yeah. It goes even more to the electoral electoral boundaries, that kind of thing, because, I mean, if they call us Sturgeon River, every little bit helps, right?
And I think, well, if we if we get the one that's still in the hopper for us, that takes care of all our investments.
Yeah, no, and that's what I'm saying, we just need one to
More would be better, but even that one would cover off.
No, and that one should unlock several others.
And I see one of the other advantages, working more as a region, is avoiding that race to the bottom. So when you have the EDOs, stay up to the EDOs, this is the thing, working together rather than working against each other and and giving, you know, too many incentives or too many tax breaks, it's not good for that municipality. So just stand strong as a region, you can probably be more advantaged for the region. But yeah, I've got Wes and then Mike.
I just want to get back to the, during your presentation, you you spoke about how well-positioned our region was globally in terms of transportation and logistics. We have the rail line going right past Lakeview. Is that is that a critical, because we're also right on the Hyundai? I mean, the trucks could come as easy as rail. So how big of a carrot is that rail spur?
It depends on the type of industry. So you take, take Orion Plastics. For them locating in Campbell Park and being able to access a rail spur was absolutely critical for why they're in St. Albert. If if that spur wasn't there, they wouldn't be here.
Same with Duraline.
Yeah, same with Duraline. So it's, you know, if if they were, you know, a software company, it wouldn't matter. If they're in a company that moving goods, especially large volumes of goods, is part of their core business, it's absolutely critical. So the fact that you've got rail connections on both sides of the city is a huge advantage and that it's not as difficult to build a spur in. Again, is a huge advantage. A lot of other places, it's not easy to have that little bit of rail to go right to your shop and you can do it here.
So, so Prince Rupert, this port, are they, are the other national players like a C N like beefing up their rail line to?
Yes.
Okay, so as that comes online, then then hopefully that raises a profile of our region even further, right?
Absolutely. And one of the the projects we're working on is is building a large network that would create a more of an inland port here. And your ballpark numbers were probably looking at around thirty-two billion dollars investment by the time it's built out. And it would, in theory, form a bit of a crescent around the region that goes from kind of the top corner of Strathcona County through Sturgeon, right around St. Albert and around down towards the International Airport with a series of intermodal yards and other manufacturing facilities. So that when products come in from places like Asia, we could do value-added finishing work here, and if it's thirty percent value-added, then you can move it on to the rest of the world, depending on the product, as a made in Canada. So there's some really significant advantages of moving product then into Asia or sorry, into the U S or Europe once it's been brought here and manufactured. So that our dollars create, our land access is great, those transportation routes are really strong. So we think that there's tremendous opportunity for value-added manufacturing, value-added agriculture and making us a bridge to access American and U S markets for some of the initial might be coming out of Asia. St. Albert, again, is really well positioned for that.
Just as a, as an anecdote, if you order, because I do, a shirt that's made in Vietnam, it lands in Anchorage and then goes to Memphis before it comes back to Canada, which flies right over Edmonton, it's a little bizarre, but anyway.
Absolutely.
Councilor Kilic.
Yeah, Chris. You mentioned Dubai, and if you can get a Formula One truck to move we have lots of land over here.
We have noise by law.
The the direct benefit is often well measured, but there's a lot, lots of indirect spinoffs. Like, if we, we may not be successful in locating a business in St. Albert, but if it moves to short part, employees live in, potentially could live in St. Albert and, you know, they buy houses and, you know, all those good things. So is Edmonton Global able to measure or even forecast kind of that secondary spinoff?
Yes, I'm just seeing if I could pull up a slide that actually has that in it.
Because there's, you know, direct and indirect is are too important.
Totally. So in, if you look at St. Albert, if we're using the twenty eighteen census, almost seventeen thousand people who live in St. Albert, work in Edmonton, but almost twelve thousand live and work in St. Albert, almost three thousand are within fifty kilometers of St. Albert. And then it's quarter outside of that. So absolutely, from a resident's perspective, every time you get an investment, I grow the jobs in the rest of the region, it absolutely helps. There's a large study that was done by the Monks School of Economics on the economic impacts of Toronto Global and and how investments in the GTA were impacting other communities, and they showed a very direct connection. But it is that direct, indirect and induced. And if we did a, we worked with Air Products on a on a fairly large study about the direct and direct and induced benefits of that one point three billion dollar project. So that's that's building the world's largest net zero hydrogen facility in Edmonton. That actually, that's moved from being a one point three billion, now they're saying it's going to be a one point six billion, they've added some add-ons. But the indirect is actually higher than the direct benefits. And the induced were almost the same as well. So it's 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 the construction jobs, it's manufacturing of of pipe and, you know, metals, it's the you know, it's the companies here that that make some of the plastics or the insulation that might be put into it. So there will be St. Albert businesses as well as individuals benefiting from that. And it lifts the economy, which then also attracts another businesses. That's the numbers.
The nickel, yeah, for air products.
So for the air products one on its own, the belief is, and these are, these are based on on models, not not exacts. But for St. Albert alone, the belief is it'll have about a twenty-eight million dollar bump to the GDP with about fourteen million of that being labor-related income. And about a hundred and forty full-time employment in the construction phase of that that project that would be direct to St. Albert or indirect and induced to St. Albert, which is is pretty substantial.
Yep, okay.
Roger. Just another question, do you work with C N Rail directly? Are they soliciting their own business or are you working on projects with them?
We do work directly with C N and C P. It's more often that's that's about future work, though. The other one that we're working quite a bit with is D P World, and they run the Port of Prince Rupert and the Port of Vancouver. And we've actually had them here a couple of times to look at investments in where those intermodal hubs would be that then C N and C P would plug into.
Okay, and there's a lot of new private rails, like small links, especially in Sturgeon, Candu's big out there and they have their spurs that they've shut down and they've reopened. So I mean, those railways wouldn't always have access to those areas too. So do you work with the collective or not?
I'd say we we are, but not in a very rigorous way right now. We're really starting to do more work on the this idea of how do we build a more integrated global supply chain hub inside the region. Those players are going to be critical, but I think we're probably more early stage on that than than having really detailed conversation.
And speaking of that, I actually have an email from this morning from Tyler Bannock from C N. Wants to meet with me, so if anyone wants to join me for that meeting. He'll be at the convention in Calgary, so I'll set up a meeting with him sometime.
Just something to add to Air Products, I'm not sure whether you know this, Chris, just that from a induced benefit. So we all, all the regions, even including Edmonton, have the Alberta Capital Region Waste Water Commission. And Air Products is using reused water from the Alberta Capital Region Waste Water Commission. So there's an induced benefit to us because not only are they doing, but there's also potentially an opportunity for rate stabilization arising out of that.
Wonderful.
So there there's an opportunity there.
You're so proud of that.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you think but I mean, I mean, they're, they're building, they're building the actual infrastructure to actually use it themselves. And so there's an opportunity for long-term, but there's an opportunity.
Well, yeah, Mike is next, you have a full presentation there.
And you wanted me to comment about forward slash as well, correct?
Yeah, and I also want to hear your your thoughts and your involvement with the collaborative economic development that that Kerry brought up. I mean, if we don't land a business here, but somebody that we're involved with through C E D, we will benefit even financially. So I don't know if you're working with the technical group on
I know we're
Selection of pilots.
That, but I wouldn't say that we're, we don't have a project on the go right now that's kind of a test or a release.
So, not yet.
But it's, that gives us an ability. When we're we're getting down to the the last bits of an investment and there's something that's needed to open it up, let's let's say that there's a rail spur. Let's let's say that there's a rail spur or some other piece that the region might say, let's get together and we'll invest half a million dollars to build that connection in. Not only does that make it easier to land that deal, but then there's potential for an economic benefit to come back out of CED. The whole region. It's a great tool in the toolbox.
So, yeah. Okay, Chris, you talked a lot about St. Albert's advantage from like a land use point of view, like Lakeview and rail spurs, et cetera. Do we have an advantage more from an internal workings, like our tax rate, our our department, I just, some of those softer services? That that you're seeing when you're trying to sell St. Albert?
Yeah, I it's a really good question. And I I don't know that I know enough to really answer that in a in a rigorous way. I would say, though, that there's three things that any municipality should be really thinking about. That's predictability, transparency and speed. More, it doesn't mean you have to stay the same, but the more predictable your your land use is going to be, your MDP, all those things make it easier for a community or for a company to say, yes, this is a safe investment, we trust you. If there are things that that change, so let's say that, you know, they've got to get, you know, permitting done on that site. The more transparent you are, so they understand the the process and the timelines of it, you know, the better off you are and the more that's going to help you win and build a reputation for you. And then speed, the faster when you get to vertical, the better, you know, you will be competing with that. The slower you are, again, you build a reputation on that. St. Albert has had challenges historically on that last one on speed. Some of the other municipalities in the region, the Duke, Lutu County, Parkland, especially Natchezon, have taken that as an area where they can compete to win on that speed piece and getting pre zoning and other pre work done so that a decision can move through, you know, in in weeks rather than months. So I think there's still some room to improve there for St. Albert. But I know Mike and the team are 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 really looking hard, how to be competitive, what they need to do to win. The types of investments that might be coming and how to be successful for those. Because it doesn't make sense to to go after everything, let's find the ones you think you can win and what that critical path looks like. So I I know, again, from the time that I spent on St. Albert's economics, Sustainability Advisory Board, that was a constant topic of how to be more competitive, both in the region and the rest of the world. So it's a process, but I think you're getting there.
Yeah, I hope, I'm glad you used the word. It might even just be a lingering perception because I've heard very differently in the last two or three years that this.
Simple question.
Okay, Forward Slash.
Really quick on Forward Slash, so on September twenty eighth, it's the same day as the Edmonton Global midyear update. So we'll have people from the major update that starts at two. We've got a networking session that's at four with all of the mayors and councils from around the region, a number of provincial government officials, Randy Bosno from the events. Then we move into a pre tour of Forward Slash for you, so that you have a really good sense of what that event is going to look like. So you can act as a bit of a host inside of it. It's really on the region's future. So the five big opportunities for the region, hydrogen, life sciences, food and ag, global supply chain and artificial intelligence. And it's, we've got experts on each of those areas really talking about the future of each of those, what the opportunities are in each of those. It's going to help us unify around a regional narrative, so we can tell the stories of collective better. And part of the goal of this, isn't so much an event, but it's to start a movement where companies, governments can get together and figure out how to de-risk and move forward faster. And hydrogen is a great example. We've got tremendous opportunity in hydrogen. If we get going, if we just sit back and see what happens, we'll probably grow at roughly the rate of inflation, which right now isn't too bad. But if we get after it, we've got the ability to maybe have somewhere between sixty and four hundred billion dollars a year in economic activity if we get after it. And that's by doing things like de-risking long haul trucking. Right now, there's no fueling infrastructure for long haul trucks. There's no companies in the region that own a hydrogen powered vehicle. But if there was a program where, let's say, either leasing or or purchase agreements in three years, we had twenty trucking companies say, we're going to buy three each. Now Shell, SunCore, Air Products can say that three year commitment to purchase or lease allow us to build a network of fueling stations. Having that network of fueling stations allows those companies to say, oh, now we can do ten each. And then more fueling infrastructure, more of that. It then allows all of the smaller vehicles to say, now this is enough for us to access. So delivery vehicles, individual cars, we end up having a virtuous cycle where things built and roll out much, much quicker than they would in their own. And that's just by bringing people together, talking about what we were trying to do, de-risking that investment to all of us, individuals, governments and corporations. And we can then start to build in just that one piece of it. And we've got the same efforts happening on things like like steel manufacturing, glass manufacturing, concrete, where you can start to say, here's the goal we're trying to reach and bring people de-risk. Principle, each one of those pipes. We think we can not just have, you know, strong growth, but radically transformational growth.
But the format, is it?
Format, yeah, sorry, it's.
Like chairs, the same.
It's a mix of, you'll come in, we've got displays set up, some massive exhibits. We've got, we're just bringing in a hydrogen car, we've got a bunch of stuff, hydrogen, same ideas in ag and food and all those. You have an hour and a half of talking, touching, eating things, talking to experts, about two and a half hours of those leaders then speaking from the stage, explaining our vision for the future with music and some dance, a whole bunch of things happen on the stage, back into the room again to look at, I think, the touching and talking and trying to move from the, oh, this is really interesting, to how do we get involved? And then coming out of that, that'll end at eleven o'clock, coming out of that, we're building working rooms. A whole bunch of other activities so that that energy continues, you know, going forward. But it'll be a pretty. Thousand, we've got room for a thousand people, we're almost out of tickets. I believe everyone on your council's got a ticket.
Yeah, we get, we.
Yeah, it's in our calendars.
I think we do.
I can double check to make sure you each have a ticket. We have a preferred rate for sale, because you've been on the steering committee of this for the last year. But it's, it's, we've got all the universities, colleges are there, all municipalities, they're there, businesses, each of those sectors are there, plus businesses from, you know, from from finance and VCs and a whole bunch of others. It really is trying to bring leaders into a room to say, let's get after this.
Hopefully.
It's the twenty, it's the twenty eighth, but I mean, yeah, I, we have it in our calendar, but it doesn't say we have tickets.
We do have a table, we have a table.
We have a table?
Yeah.
Show up and stand, counselor, and you're in.
There'll be a name connected each ticket.
I think, I think that you reserve or RSVP by Wednesday of this week.
Okay, so did you guys hear that?
Yeah.
Each RSVP one way or the other if you're there by Wednesday. Should be in your calendar.
It's in the calendar.
Yeah. If you respond yes, then you have a ticket. So don't respond tentative, because then they don't know what to do. Yes or no answer. Okay, Mike, why don't we turn it over to you now? Thanks, Chris. Chris, can you send me your slides? Maybe I can inject some positivity into my state of the city.
You mean it wasn't? You were gonna.
Taxi, Chris.
Okay, I'm going to try to, I guess, formally for the online audience, Mike Erickson, I'm the director of the City's Economic Development Department. I'm going to try to maybe go through this fairly quickly, just because Chris and Sarah did an excellent job, and I think you've touched on a lot of this, so a lot of the background I'll breeze through. It's really, this this was was directed by council on September thirteenth last year to provide this this annual update. So this is effectively the second assessment of the investment plan. The investment plan was a was a three year plan, so this is the second assessment of the three years. Just quickly, as an overview, I think Chris touched on this, founded in twenty seven, fourteen shareholder municipalities, twelve board members, twenty three staff, five million dollar annual budget. And I think, Chris, you talked about their Edmonton Global's attracting and retaining business investment and trade within the Edmonton metropolitan region. Here are the shareholders, I'll just note that the town of Bonapour withdrew in twenty twenty one and Warrenville is set to withdraw on December twelfth. Parkland County submitted notice to withdraw in twenty twenty, however, they've decided to term or re onboard or or continue on with their as a shareholder, and that decision was made by them back in July of this year.
Thank you, it's like I said, Town of Warrenville's decision, whether or not they go, final decision will be announced tomorrow. It is not decided yet.
Okay, thank you for the, and I should say thank you to Sarah and Chris's team, a lot of the information that we did receive was through them and some of the updates are up to the minute.
So Sarah, are they doing a vote?
Correct, at their council meeting tomorrow, at the council meeting starts at four tomorrow. We're not there, so we're listening in for the final decision.
Okay.
So quick background on the investment plan initiated in October of twenty twenty at a special meeting. The Edmonton Global shareholders approved the implementation of this plan, resulting in shareholder contributions increasing from two million annually to five million by twenty twenty two, which is where we're at right now. Last year in April, shareholders approved the annual contribution fee at three point five million. And again, this increase was in line with the commitment within the investment plan. In April of this year, the shareholders approved annual contribution fee and the three year budget commitment of five million, touched on this a bit earlier. So that keeps our commitment steady at five million annually for twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. This table is just to just to summarize the the annual commitments, a tally at the bottom there. So as you can see, all shareholder contributions have increased from half a million in twenty seventeen to five million this year. And St. Albert shareholder contributions have increased from roughly twenty four thousand to two hundred and forty thousand annually. So this is really, I would say, this is the the meat and potatoes of the evaluation of the effectiveness of the investment plan proposal. This methodology is the same that we provided last year. What we really tried to focus on were the seven outcomes that were identified with and committed to within the original investment plan that was presented to all shareholders. So I know this is a really text heavy slide, the first two two columns on the far left in gray, both in dark and sort of light gray, those were the the targets of the outcomes that were put out in twenty twenty. The next two columns there for twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two, I'll just notice two, three, so just. Right now, this isn't a final of the year, obviously, as we sit in September. So those those were the the progress updates. So just wanted to compare last year to to this year. I think we can generally say that in terms of about from an evaluation perspective, that Edmonton Global has has either met or exceeded all of the performance outcome, pardon me, committed to. The only one in there that was that's under is final investment decisions, and we understand there's still a few that are in the queue and start haven't been announced, aren't at that stage yet. That's what we've got, the three that are noted there will likely to expect maybe a few more before the end of the year. And then the final column there on the right shaded in green is, I'm just just trying to demonstrate the impact on St. Albert locally. So a lot of those are the same. We do have one active opportunity, I think the other one we, Chris spoke about, we've taken off there because we know that it's it's no longer with us, that it's it's looking like it's going to be elsewhere in the region. Yes, and zero FIDs this year, so. Implications. I think we talked about this one last year, but I think it's worth worth repeating that we have to be cautious when we're evaluating these large scale investments or investment traction efforts over a short period of time. This chart here is really just to try to highlight that the larger the investment, the more complex the opportunity, certain industries just require a greater amount of time. So your small format retailer, those can happen within a few months or a year, whereas your, you know, heavy industrial facility, energy, oil and gas mining, those are typically, you know, anywhere from five to sometimes decades to to attract those. So this was just, this was actually presented by Edmonton Global, I think, last year, just sort of showing that comparison of of other international organizations, international, sort of regional, pardon me, investment attraction organizations and just comparing Edmonton Global's budget to some of these other ones within North America. Looking at some of the implications, so the the financial support that we provide to Edmonton Global is really a trade off. We talked about this last year, the the time and money that we spend supporting Edmonton Global and regional investment attraction sometimes comes at the expense of the time and money that we spend on investment attraction at the local level. And the support that our department provides, whether it's attracting investment or the support that we provide to our local businesses here in St. Albert. Currently, Edmonton Global shareholder contributions represent approximately seventeen percent of the economic development department's budget. And just noting that participation in Edmonton Global doesn't just come at a financial expense, but but time and staff resources. So I know the council takes part in things like this. We have staff that attends and our chief administrative officer attends frequent meetings. Our economic development staff respond to requests for information, you talked about that before. We provide local information back and forth to Edmonton Global, we support site visits, certain regional events. Like Forward Slash, we coordinate on regional advocacy and report on performance. And so with that, the recommendation that we have here is that the committee of the whole recommends to council to pass the following motions. A, receive this information, the report entitled Edmonton Global Investment Plan Effectiveness Report Twenty Twenty Two, attached to the administrative report bearing the same title. And B, to amend the second part of the motion concerning Edmonton Global reporting passed on September thirteenth, twenty twenty one, to add the words in Q four, following receipt of the Edmonton Global midyear update and of that part of the motion.
Okay. Sheena first and then Charlie. And Mike. Go back a screen. So what I'm wondering is, why do you want it to Q four? Because we're discussing this now in Q three, did we have Q three last time and that's why we're doing this now? So why, I see you're nodding just so everybody at home knows what's going on. So why do you want Q four to say, just felt this was a bit rushed or?
Thank you for the question, I should have probably clarified it, we just felt it was important. Has the major update has a lot of this information in there? It felt like we were sort of duplicating some of the work both on on for our admin team and Edmonton Global's to put this information together. I guess, a couple, a couple of months before the midyear update, just to be a little bit more efficient, might save us some time if we provide it after.
If you'd permit me to maybe add a little bit, part of the challenge too is because we're putting a package together for September twenty eighth, which is the midyear update. That'll be a more fulsome report where this, it's a bit of a cutoff in the reporting. So there, some of the numbers you're getting today won't jive with the numbers you're going to get at the end of the month. So we just make it so we could be get one set of numbers.
Okay, that would make sense. So your midyear is not our midyear, I guess, is the thing for in the world. Okay, that makes sense, okay, that was it.
Okay, I'm not sure you can answer this, Mike, but the economic percentage that you're, you know, contributing to Edmonton Global is seventeen percent. What was it in two thousand seventeen?
I think it was six percent of our budget.
So it's quite climbed quite a bit. And and what would you see as, you know, in your department, an acceptable percentage, like how far?
In in a perfect world, I'd like to see them separated, that it didn't become this trade off, that it was its own.
Yeah, if I could, I think it's it's ultimately an internal accounting decision about where the money comes from, but but to separate it from that, you rob it from somewhere else, to use a vernacular, unless you increase the overall budget, right, related to this.
How do you calculate the value?
A very different question, one that we struggle to to answer in economic development in general. I think I typically look at, and I think it's common, sort of look at outputs and outcomes, right? We can always control our outputs, the the number of meetings we attend, the number of phone calls we make, emails we send. That outcome, those final investment decisions that we're all chasing, those are much harder to to control, but ultimately what we're all chasing. So how you assess the 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 value, it's tough to put on that thing that is somewhat out of your control. So it's very difficult, I didn't really, I don't think I answered your question, I'm just saying it's a very difficult question to answer.
And you have the three levels, your levels, so are they all equally, you know, powerful to you?
You know, I think I'll go back to the image that I tried to present of the sales funnel to Council McKay and that I think each part of that funnel is important and trying to figure out which piece of that funnel is the most important or least important is, again, a very difficult question. But the answer, I think they're all, they're all important.
I think if I can add on to that, that's what I was kind of maybe poorly trying to ask you. And then again, some of the question that even came from Mayor Heron's comment about what makes it better. I mean, I think so the 17% of your budget, I mean, if that is, that 17% of that budget is what Global is doing or allows us to have access to, is there a way to measure that? So I was trying to determine is there, is that, is that the value added that we see in Global coming out of your your department? Plus also pile on to that, some of the comments you gave back or Chris gave back in relation to the response to Mayor Heron around, you know, what, what makes us competitive? So that's kind of what I was trying to determine whether or not, whether that 17% is actually tied into what you'd be doing anyways if we didn't have Edmonton Global, right? Do you follow me?
Yep. And I think, you know, the, the keep sort of saying the same thing, I think, with us and the folks at Edmonton Global, it's really tough to make that determination two years into this evaluation of that commitment to go, you know, ramp up our, our funding. I think it's a different picture, you know, five years down the road. Probably better, you know, more fair to look back at a five-year period and go, okay, what was really done versus just looking at a two-year period?
I agree with that. And I also think, I mean, it's just, how do you make that determination? I mean, so when, when you throw out numbers like this, I mean, you're actually struggling on what portion of your budget, the $243,000 comes from. But I'm saying is if, if we didn't have Edmonton Global, what would be the cost? You know, I mean, and how would we be able to compare that really? And so we're not going to be able to have those metrics until probably down the road.
Thank you, Ken. For your comments. I think the biggest collaboration points Edmonton Global can do for the region is from an international outreach perspective. Each municipality understands their own asset and resources the best. We will never understand that like, like yourselves, which is why working with your local E D team or Mike is very critical. But to have each municipality spend money doing international outreach, the amount of data, research, travel our team does, I highly doubt you can do that with 250,000. Besides City of Edmonton, I don't believe any municipality's contribution can truly achieve that. So when you're looking at your fiscal budget, is international outreach a part of your economic development bucket? Or is there another aspect where you can put international outreach in is something, is something that may be of consideration?
You say that Edmonton Global doesn't understand the individual municipality. No, St. Albert's pretty darn well, which is an advantage for us.
We do, and, and we are putting in a lot of effort to do our regional tours, to understand the assets. But no matter how well we do, it's like your local in-house employee and your outsourced partner, it's never the same.
Although, although, I'd say I'd feel a little unhoused here.
Just a huge benefit.
Give me another question.
So my voice feels, and what Mike's just giving me, so. So when I saw the list of what to do, which is on the slide, whatever it was, most of what I saw there, I was expecting to, for you guys to do anyway. So what I'm wondering is, being part of Edmonton Global, is that allowing it to become more focused? Or is it at like the expense of doing, because I'm concerned that sometimes this department, not in particular, but in general, can often worry themselves of busy work as opposed to actually trying to see what's actually meaningful. So when I saw that list of what you were doing, I thought that's really the stuff that we should be doing. So is it helping to become more focused or is it becoming a, like, or is it more of a distraction from other things?
That's a question.
Yeah, that's for you, because you guys are doing it.
I think sometimes, if I'm being really honest, it's a bit of both. There are a lot of commitments to be part of something that is a regional, as a regional focus. So there is, there's a big time commitment that goes into it. Are there, are there some meetings where, any organization, like anything that take part in, sometimes you walk away from meeting going, well, that wasn't a great use of my time. But often you do go to meetings and go, you know, I learned something new. This is important. I want to make sure this information gets back to our team. This may help us with this, that, and the other thing. So I think your does depend on the situation. But, you know, I kind of touched on that point. I mean, Edmonton Global, it is a huge, we're talking about the region. We do have engagement at all levels, at the council level, at the chief administrative officer level, and then we have our economic development officers that are, you know, meeting on at least a monthly basis, but probably more frequently than that. So just all that communication and coordination definitely takes up time.
Okay, but is it because of stuff that you said you were producing, like those reports, et cetera, et cetera? I think that was a value to be able to have on hand. So just the fact that they're requesting it forces us to be able to have it. And then we actually have it for anybody does come, as opposed to trying to make it scramble for it after the fact. So I guess that's what I'm wondering is if the demands of Global in some ways are actually also helping us refine how we're presenting St. Albert? Or is it basically just been kind of neutral in that category? Like, did we already have it anyway planned?
Yeah, I would, I would suggest, and I can't remember who asked the question before about competition. I think there's this happens, it's like, it's like having a really good friend that you're competitive with. They drive you to be better because you learn from them. So, you know, as we work together and we learn best practice, or we're talking with our regional colleagues and we see something they're doing, we go, geez, that's a good idea. Maybe we should be doing something similar, or this is the standard because at this international show, if we're competing against Dubai, this is the standard with which we provide the information. I think it sort of forces us all to top our game.
That's a good answer.
I'd also just
Bill wants to just jump in on that one.
Can I just say, I recommend you guys come every year, just that we have a more thorough understanding, so.
Happy to.
I'll make the motion.
Bill wants to jump in.
I was just gonna add, I think Mike's point is, is having a table allows us to actually collaborate where I would say that, that level of collaboration might not exist without Edmonton Global to provide that venue for discussion. In fact, I would tell you, it wouldn't exist at the same level that it does now. The other piece is, I don't believe that we would be doing the same thing that Edmonton Global does if left to our own devices. We would not be looking at the scale and scope of potential investment opportunities, either nationally or globally, that Edmonton Global is able to bring to the table. Would Mike be able to do more with an extra table? And absolutely, he would, right? But it would be fairly prokial if I could use that.
Make the motion. I can make the motion before I have to spell pro.
I, I can't tell if this Zoom software will let me see your hand up or not. Sometimes I can't do it, but I don't know. Do you have any questions?
I don't know. Thank you. This is great.
Okay. She's my alternate on Edmonton Global, and you'll see her quite often more than me, because there's always conflicts with the M R B. And she, she's Mr. Enjoying it. So go ahead, Council McKay.
Yeah, I'll just make the motion that the committee of whole recommends to council to pass the following motions. A, receiving as information the report entitled Edmonton Global Investment Plan Effectiveness Report 2022, attached to the administrative report bearing the same title. And B, amending the second part of the motion concerning Edmonton Global reporting passed on September 13th, 2021, to add the words of in Q4, following receipt of the Edmonton global mid-year update at the end of that part of the motion. Wow.
Any opening comments?
No, I think the fault, the last set of comments was very good and kind of brought it all together. Thanks. I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Awesome. Okay, call for the vote. So that's unanimous. It's good to see. Normally I give us a couple hours for a take break, but I need to go. So let's take 10 minutes and then we'll get back to your B I A stuff. That's the presentation I've been looking forward to. There's Natalie back. There's Natalie. Good. Okay, so we do have Nina McBryant.
Brian, yep.
McBryant.
Brian, yes.
Brian, is she online right now?
I think I saw her in the list.
I am, yes. Hello.
We just can't see you. Maybe you don't want us to see you, but if you want to turn your camera on, you're welcome to.
Oh, I can do that.
Could be an interesting discussion.
These business improvement areas.
There she is. Nina, thank you for joining us, you've been out to St. Albert now and given this presentation. Not everyone saw it when you came to our businesses, so I'm super excited to have you back again. So if you're okay, if you have a bit of a presentation, then we'll do questions. And then Sean has a presentation, but if you stick around, there might be even further questions after, after our department present. So why don't you start now and we'll see where it goes.
Sounds great, yeah, I'll, I'll keep it brief, Sean has a presentation, but I just thought I'd share a bit of that firsthand perspective that I was able to share with some of your downtown businesses and some of you who were there. And then, yeah, happy to stick around for a little bit for questions, I think I can stay until about 11:30. So my name is Panita McBrien, I'm the Executive Director of the Edmonton Downtown Business Association. So we are the Downtown BIA for the city of Edmonton. We also have a BIA council in Edmonton, so that's all 13 BIAs that represent main streets and business districts, big and small. And we meet regularly as well, and we're sort of, you know, in a lot of ways, once we're all together, we do function similarly to something like a Chamber of Commerce, because we represent, I think about 5,000 individual businesses in total between all of us. Or 3,000, that actually, that sounds like a better number, that sounds more realistic, I'd have to go back and check. But it's a, it is a very strong representation in terms of advocacy. We create efficiencies for city administration and for city council and the mayor's office in that we're doing day-to-day consultation and engagement with our Main Street businesses all the time. And then are able to bring that voice in sort of a more unified way, rather than councillors and staff having to meet with each business individually. So that's one really important piece of what we do, is that advocacy piece. The other thing that I think is interesting to think about as a city council is how we're able to leverage funding from other levels of government, once, once a BIA exists or multiple, I don't know if. I don't know if, if St. Albert would ever end up with, with other BIAs forming, you do kind of need a bit of a critical mass for it to be worth it, but even just for the downtown. You know, many of our BIAs have been able to leverage federal and now more recently provincial grant funding for economic development and place-making and beautification activities. And again, that's funding that probably wouldn't have been able to flow to the municipality, because it's intended to support businesses directly, and it's not very efficient to try and flow that directly to individual businesses either. So by having this sort of collective and this entity that exists to represent a specific geographic area of businesses, we've been able to leverage a lot of funding from other levels of government. Us, for example, obviously at a much larger scale, we have 1,300 businesses in total in downtown Edmonton. But I essentially almost doubled our budget last year in grant funding alone. Hundreds of thousands of dollars from the federal and provincial governments. And then we were able to secure a million dollars from the province this year, in this year's budget. So really, really powerful in that way, and we're spending that money on anything from retail pop-ups, which is an effort for us to fill vacant space and get more businesses into downtown, to we're going to buy some new planters for downtown streetscaping, to programming some major festivals, we brought in major international art installations and put on a 10-day-long festival. So, you know, there's the really, really big stuff like that, and then there's, you know, our regular operating budget, which is collected through a levy on all businesses in the area, is spent on, on our staff, small staff, many BIAs, especially at a smaller school, only have an executive director as their staff, or they might have an executive director and one marketing person. And so that operating budget obviously goes towards some of that beautification, improving the experience of a downtown. Almost every BIA, if not all of them, has a cleaning budget. So we do, you know, daily litter pickup, power washing, that kind of thing. And then all the way up to the bigger stuff, so, so major marketing initiatives, we'd have, you know, obviously, we all have our social media platforms that represents and markets all the businesses in the area, a website, we promote events and attract events and festivals. And, and it really is, it's quite a broad mandate. But at its core, what we're here for is to support the businesses who are our members, we report to our members. My board is, is made up of our downtown businesses, and that's who my boss is. And to really improve the economic conditions and the experience of a district, and to serve and be a voice for those businesses. That's all I've got.
Awesome, thank you, Panita, so any questions?
Go ahead, Ken. Thank you very much for the presentation, Panita, and I did attend the one in March. So again, thank you for coming out, taking time out of your busy schedule, I really appreciate it. I guess the question is, is so what's the relationship then with the actual municipal government? How, how is there any reporting, or is that a reporting at a committee level, or is it just informal, how, how does that occur?
Yeah, great question, so there's a great little chart, actually, that I could share afterwards, I should have brought that with me. But essentially, our city administration created it. So our board is formed at our AGM every year, so just timeline-wise, so you can kind of picture how this goes. So in October, we come together for our AGM, our board is selected, and our budget for the following year is established. That then goes to executive committee at Edmonton City Council. You could also do an all-city council presentation, we do it at executive committee. They kind of review, they have the opportunity to ask questions of us, and often we'll, we'll have board members attend as well. Just, it's just that sort of extra layer of oversight. Technically, it is the board, because it's our, our business's money, and we're an independent entity. But by city councils seeing those budgets every year and understanding sort of what the BIA is planning to do, it's just that extra step of oversight, and it's that opportunity to have a conversation. So that happens kind of as you head into the end of the year. And then we go before city council again, and before executive committee in the spring, spring, summer, I think it was actually June this year. And that's where we present our annual reports from the previous year. So that's kind of two checkpoints in the year, where council has sort of a direct oversight and audience, like a formal audience with BIAs. And then, and then informally as well, like we all, obviously, we'd all have a city councillor who represents the area that our businesses are in. We all have relationships with the mayor, and so there's obviously informal meetings throughout the year, because councillors have a pretty keen interest generally in, in what the BIAs in their area are doing.
Great, great response, thank you for that clarification. Just one more follow-up in relation to that, then how do you, how does the BIAs coordinate with their activities with administration? You've identified potentially festivals, you've identified street improvements, public art. How do you coordinate that right down to working administration, is that through committees or wards? I'm, I'm kind of curious about that.
So we do get great support from the economic investment, I think in Edmonton, it's called the Edmonton Economic Investment Team. So we have one person, because we have 13 BIAs, we actually have a dedicated person on that team called the BIA liaison. Prior to that, though, I think it was just an economic development officer who had the BIAs sort of in their, in their workload. And so, and so that person attends our monthly meeting, where all 13 BIAs are together. And that's sort of our, our coordinating person who helps make sure that whatever we're working on, all the relevant city departments know what's happening. And, and then we also have regular touchpoints with our civic events team, because obviously, events are a big part of what we do. So we have at least one or two contacts within that team to help us coordinate things like license of occupation for, for closing a road and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that would be, the last question would be, out of the 13 BIAs, were there any new ones? Like, I mean, I'm trying to think, starting, I mean, there's been a, for lack of a better term, a culture of business improvement areas within the city of Edmonton, it's been historical for a long period of time. Whereas if, if the businesses in our downtown core, or even other areas, want to get up and running, are there any recent examples of a BIA starting up in, that you're aware of?
Yeah, so the newest one in Edmonton is, it's called the Crossroads BIA. It's sort of at the north end, if you're familiar, there's 124th Street. That BIA only goes, I think, to about 105th or 107th Ave, I think. And so then a new BIA was just started for that north leg. So as you go north from 107th Ave towards 118th Ave, sort of before you get over to the Kingsway area, that whole area has a lot of Main Street businesses, they wanted to get involved, but it's sort of distinct as an area from the existing ones, so they, they just formed their own, I think it was only about three years ago.
Okay, so there are some recent examples, I'm, I'm just saying, we're trying to, trying to potentially advocate to start up one within our downtown area. So is there some models that we can, or some recent successes that we can point a finger to? Anyways, thank you very much again for responding, taking time out of your busy day, I know how busy you are.
Any more questions? Go ahead, Mike.
Panita, good to see you again. We're targeting, I think, 25% of the businesses to say yes, that they would want to be part of a BIA. In, in your practical world, what, what have you been able to achieve? Is, is a 25% goal achievable, or like in, in Edmonton, do you kind of get 50% or?
Yeah, it's a good question, I think it's trickier in a really big district like ours. I'm just thinking of ones that would be comparable in size, like 124th Street or Old Strathcona. I think 25% is, is very realistic, and I think you need that level of participation and engagement for it to be successful.
Yeah, okay, you, you want, want a good, stable base to kind of get it up and running and people committed to it, I, I imagine.
Yeah, yeah, and then typically, the rule is, I think our bylaw here, I don't know if this is actually in provincial legislation or if it's in the municipal bylaw, but you need, I believe it's 51 or 59% of businesses to then vote to disband. So that's the mechanism for if it's not working. Businesses do have the option of petitioning, and they have to get, out of all businesses in the district somewhere, I can't remember if it's 51 or 59%, have to, to vote or sign on to dissolve the BIA.
Okay, good, thank you.
And it says in our agenda report that the municipal council appoints to the board, is that, that's correct?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty, it's a, it's a procedural thing, so the membership votes in the board at our AGM first, and then that board slate goes before executive committee, and it's sort of a, yeah, just a check to say yes.
So that was actually my question, because, you know, in St. Albert, I was envisioning council interviewing all these potential board members and making recommendations to the BIA, which seems kind of overlordish. So, so generally, your board then does the interviews and selects their, their preferred candidates, and then the Edmonton council generally just agrees.
Yeah, yeah, that's basically how it goes, and I think for when you're starting up, I think from, even from being in that room with your downtown businesses, I think it'd be pretty clear who the most sort of, you know, they're already seen as leaders, they want to put up their hand and do this, so you'd probably have a volunteer slate to get started, and then that group would be charged with the succession after that.
Do you know of any BIAs outside of Edmonton, but within the region?
Oh, there's lots, yeah, there's a downtown BIA in Grand Prairie, there's several in Calgary. Oh, in the Edmonton region, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah, okay.
Does Spruce Grove have one?
Spruce Grove has a BIA.
All right, and when you were here in March, you talked about it's more of a loose and informal kind of provincial committee of BIAs, is that still? Is it something that meets, because I wouldn't, as I said, I wouldn't mind attending your little mini-convention or whatever it is.
Yeah, we only meet about once a year, and we haven't actually met yet this year. Yeah. But I can definitely let you know if that does get.
We're just talking about the, the pains of forming, I, I just, I was in Medicine Hat, and I feel like their, their BIA just dissolved. They felt like they got the work done that they wanted to do, and then they dissolved, but, but the mayor was not happy with the dissolution. So, because their downtown was great, and I don't know if we're going to hear in Sean or Mike's presentation, they visited Leftbridge? Because, and yeah, okay, we'll, I'll ask you guys about that, okay, is there any more questions? Awesome, great background information, hopefully you can stick around for a little bit and hear our presentation, then might have more questions.
Sounds great.
Go ahead, Sean. Mike, can you kick it off?
I wanted to just thank Panita again, you've been generous with your time, thank you so much for, for being our, an external expert on this topic. And so switching from external to internal experts, I guess for the record, Mike Erickson, Director of the Economic Development Department. My colleague Sean McCully, the Manager of Business Retention and Expansion, will be providing us with updates. And yes, he is our internal subject matter expert.
All right, thanks, Mike, also thank you to Panita, because I believe I can just throw my presentation out. I think everything was pretty well covered there, so. I think what I'll do is, I'll go through the mechanics, Panita did a really good, a really good job there of going through some of real-world, world experience and the connection between the, the city and the BIA, so I'll, I'll try and maybe shave down my presentation a little bit, but I'll stick to some of the mechanics for your benefit. So downtowns are unique, there are districts consisting of mix of businesses, residents, and nonprofit organizations. Because of this unique makeup, downtown stakeholders often require coordinated, coordinated efforts to achieve common objectives. So one tool developed to assist with pooling resources and coordination of downtown stakeholders is the formation of a business improvement area or BIA. Rules and guidelines for the creation of a BIA have been established by the Government of Alberta through the Municipal Government Act and Business Improvement Area Regulation. Approximately 35 BIAs have been established throughout Alberta, with the largest concentrations in Edmonton and Calgary. BIAs work to fill support gaps, address specific issues, and create additional economic value within a defined commercial area. All businesses within a BIA become members and are required to pay a BIA tax that funds the activities and interests of that membership. It is important to highlight that the BIA is levied on the businesses within the BIA and not on the property owners. They can improve local economies through activities such as branding and marketing, communications, visitor attraction, place-making, and, and public space improvement projects, organizing and coordinating activities, events and festivals, strategic plans and marketing studies, member advocacy, safety, security, and crime prevention, and cleanliness programs. Municipalities play an important role in establishing and supporting the ongoing, going operations of a BIA. In most cases, municipalities help assess interest in establishing the BIA, help business leaders organize, connect interested parties to resources, and promote the opportunity for a BIA in the initial conceptual stages. This often comes in the form of, of public and business consultation, coordination of business and business leaders to get organized, assisting with meeting process requirements, providing financial support and staff assistance, and raising the awareness of BIAs among municipal staff and public at large. Municipalities are also required by provincial legislation to collect BIA taxes on behalf of the BIA. The following key steps are, sorry, the following are key steps for businesses to form a BIA. Establish the need, communicate with all interested parties, establish a steering committee, establish proposed boundaries, goals, and objectives, and preliminary budget, submit a formal application to the municipality, notify proposed, proposed BIA designation to business owners within the boundary, and receive support for a municipal bylaw to establish the BIA as a nonprofit statutory corporation. In order to establish a BIA, business owners must define a proposed boundary and have support of at least 25% of business owners within the proposed area. All businesses located within the boundary will become members and pay the BIA tax, opting out is not an option for business owners. As an example, for downtown St. Albert, if the downtown area redevelopment plan was used as a boundary, there's approximately 200 businesses, which would then require 50 businesses to support the BIA. Businesses opposed to establishing a BIA can submit a petition. If the city receives a petition signed by persons representing more than 50% of the business owners, a BIA cannot be established for two years. The annual BIA budget determines the BIA tax, the total BIA tax is then divided by the total assessment to confirm the annual rate. The BIA rate is then applied to the individual members collected by the city and transferred to the BIA. The BIA rate is then applied to the individual members collected by the city and transferred to the BIA. Generally speaking, the greater the BIA budget, the greater the BIA tax applied to each business. From a process perspective, there is considerable time required for the establishment of a BIA. The following slides outline an example for a flow chart. Uh, prior to January fifteen, establishment committee informs the city of their desire to submit a request to establish a BIA. By end of February, conduct, uh, public engagement activities to gather signatures for support of the establishment. By last day in March, establishing committee submits the established package and signatures to the city. By April thirty, the city verifies the signatures to ensure there's twenty-five percent support. Uh, and by June thirty, that marks the end of the petition period. July and August, preparation of council report by city administration. September and October, administration presents a report to council for approval. Following approval of council, the BIA holds an A G M to elect the board and approve the budget. Uh, December, BIA board is appointed. Uh, and then January, approval of BIA budget through the BIA budgets and, and enabling bylaws. And the first annual BIA check is sent to the BIA board of directors by the city. Financial impacts, uh, BIA levies require a method of assessment which differs from traditional property assessment, uh, performed by municipal taxes. If a BIA were, were established for downtown St. Albert, it is expected that the city would assume the cost to satisfy, satisfy this legislative requirement for collecting the levy. A high level estimate for additional staff or constant, uh, contracted services to perform the specialized assessment is in the range of fifty thousand to a hundred thousand annually. Risk assessments, uh, or sorry, risk impacts. Uh, while the establishment of a BIA requires council to pass a bylaw, a BIA must be driven, desired and supported by at least twenty-five percent of downtown business owners. Even with city support, there's a risk that a BIA is not supported by enough downtown business owners. While a BIA is commonly found to be beneficial for businesses, business districts, some businesses may, uh, find it as a deterrent and locate, uh, relocate from downtown. Uh, program or service impact, some municipalities, when municipal resources are committed to one particular business district, uh, there is often equality, uh, concerns from businesses and other districts. And organizational impacts, uh, it is expected that significant financial assistance and staff support from the city will be required to help the establishment and successful ongoing operations of the BIA. Uh, after connecting with various regional and provincial municipalities, uh, several identified efforts were, um, were identified that, that were being, uh, undertaken in respect to alternatives and complements to a BIA. Uh, the city of Edgery recently implemented their downtown revitalization plan. Uh, this plan takes a proactive approach at addressing issues facing the revitalization in their downtown. It includes incentives, uh, such as subsidies for parking structures and associated, uh, sorry, associated with new developments and funding for events. Uh, the city of Edmonton has a downtown vibrancy strategy which encompasses four prioritized goals. Uh, expand public spaces for more people and in new ways. Optimize four season experience for pedestrians, parks and patios. Make it easier to live downtown and a welcome package for new residents, students, businesses and startups. And finally, I have Fort Saskatchewan, which utilizes a downtown action plan, which also has four primary goals. Uh, increase the number of visitors to downtown, increase the frequency in which visitors come downtown, increase the length of time visitors stay downtown and increase private sector investment in the downtown. All of these mentioned initiatives provide short-term action items and have considerable F T E and budget impacts to execute. Recently, I had the pleasure of being hosted by the city of Lethbridge. Um, I met with the folks there, uh, from the city, uh, from economic development Lethbridge and also the Lethbridge Downtown BIA. In the following slides, I've provided examples of my visit and showcased the partnership between the city and the BIA. Festival Square is a brand new public plaza located in the heart of down, downtown Lethbridge and is also directly outside the, uh, the BIA office. Uh, the BIA has been activating the space with farmers markets, roller skating derbies, small concerts, uh, community yoga, food and cultural events. Uh, they celebrated their downtown awards event there, um, and a summer fam jam, summer fam jam, uh, as examples. Uh, also on quiet days, they have ping pong tables, uh, and other lawn games, uh, available for the public. Another program the city and BIA partner on is the patio and parklet support program. Uh, this program supports businesses that are interested in converting city, uh, city-owned right-of-way into expanded outdoor seating. Uh, the program consists of a hundred percent of city fees and charges are covered. Uh, financial support up to five thousand matching, uh, for costs associated with, uh, designing and, and, uh, purchasing a parklet or major patio. Uh, financial support up to a thousand dollars matching for plants, planters, furnishings, uh, and, um, uh, barriers. Um, and also city-owned patio and parklet infrastructure that can be lent out to the businesses at no cost, uh, including pre-built parklet platforms, planters and bistro tables.
So I'm free to move on.
Sure.
Is there anything preventing a business to take over a parking stall like that right now in St. Albert?
Um, I would want to confirm with our engineering and transportation folks on that one. Um, I'm not certain what we would maybe have in place that would be a barrier to, to doing that currently. Yeah, you would lose, uh, yeah, exactly. And I'm not sure how it would maybe affect, uh, you know, your, your traffic impact assessments or different things like that or emergency services and things like that too. So, um, I'm not sure. I would, I would have to double check.
This, the municipality owns those, those platforms?
Yeah, in some cases, yeah, they have, they have these pre-built ones and, and the city lends them at no cost.
I wouldn't mind, uh, in the future, not today, knowing how much one of those would cost.
Sure. That's good.
Cause they're simple. Throw that on the, you got a patio. Okay, keep going. Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's, no problem. Um, sorry. So in closing, uh, the recommendation being put forward is a council, or sorry, committee of the whole recommends to council in the spirit of fostering a vibrant downtown and facilitating the coordination of downtown businesses to pass a motion directing the C A O or his delegates to conduct a survey of downtown businesses to determine the level of interest in establishing a business improvement area for downtown St. Albert and report back to committee of the whole on the results of the survey, including any administrative recommendations arising from the results of the survey. I hope no one was counting the amount of times I said BIA. I'd be happy to take questions at this time.
When we were doing our pop-up patio enabling changes, I thought I heard that if you're serving alcohol, the patio has to be connected to the main building. So if you cross the sidewalk like that, all of a sudden you can't serve alcohol. Is that what I'm hearing? Cause they seem to do it in other municipalities.
And I was actually in Lethbridge this summer and the visible difference the B I is made down there.
Yeah.
Incredible, but you can drink, but it's not connected because we were drinking in those.
Yeah. So I wonder.
They rarely, they rarely brought it out to you. So.
They rarely brought it. She remembers that, but that was an A G L C.
It's an A G L C issue.
So they've somehow got around it.
They must have because they do allow it. So.
So that would be another question I would have is how do you get around that rule?
Yeah, if I, I mean, when, when council passed the amendment to the traffic bylaw to allow the temporary patios, temporary only, that's not permanent, to allow them to be established. At the approving authority is the city engineer and the city engineer is given fairly broad discretion to put conditions on. But when it comes to alcohol, it's, it's, that's really the A L G C. I always trip over that acronym. It's really their discretion. It's really their jurisdiction to determine where and how liquor will be served. So, yeah, it's, that's, uh, that's the basic.
But, I guess the, the big but is it, it can't happen.
Yeah, something in our bylaw to prevent it.
All right. I'm never going to use that as an excuse again. Okay, we're opening up questions. So I'll start with you, Shelley.
Uh, Sean, I have a question, uh, for you. The, um, if you're charging each business, like, uh, the five hundred dollar fee per year, that's a hundred thousand dollars. And then you're saying it's a hundred thousand dollars in staff costs for the city. So I mean, it's almost like why isn't the city just paid a hundred thousand dollars instead of taxing everyone and you're, you break even, right? So, and why only twenty-five percent? Because I mean, you know, seventy-five percent of people, you know, just being told as a business, when business are struggling right now, you have to pay this additional tax. I think you're kind of asking for a little bit more pushback when the percentage of acceptance is so low.
I think that's M G A.
Sure. Yeah, uh, correct. So I feel a lot of pressure because I can feel Panita over my shoulder as I speak. Um, but, uh, yeah, that, that's correct. It's, it's regulated through M G A as well as the, um, uh, business improvement area regulations. And so that's just the requirement that's set out in, in their, uh, criteria, uh, for twenty-five percent. Um, as far as support for the BIA. And then of course you need at least fifty percent petition to be against it. Um, so that's, that's just the criteria that, that it's set out, um, on that side. That's, that's not something that we would set up in a bylaw internally with, with the city. Um, also going back just quickly, I know you referenced the, um, the financial piece there with the, the fifty to a hundred thousand. No matter what, no matter which way this is kind of driven on, on certain things, there would be the, uh, legislative requirement for us to be collecting those taxes and doing the assessment. So that one is, if, if a BIA does form, that is something that we would be legislated to, to collecting and administering. Um, so that's just getting kind of a grasp on what we could be looking at as cost because it would be a separate assessment, um, to what we do with municipal taxes. Um, and so that's, that's why that, that cost kind of needs to be identified or acknowledged.
But then you have a hundred thousand from the business and then another hundred thousand from the city to transfer the money from the businesses, which I find kind of odd.
I think that was just an example, right?
So what we've discovered is that the, the assessment process that our assessors do on a regular basis, because they're assessing property, it's a very different process than assessing a business. And so one thing we, we've looked at and, um, discussed with several other municipalities is, is looking at a modification to, um, the M G A legislation so that we could, we wouldn't have to have our assessors perform a separate process. And that's what that cost is, is that they would have to go out and assess the business, not necessarily the property that they've already assessed within the downtown, but the business that operates within it. So there could be a cost savings if the legislation is changed so that we can just use the, the business or the building assessment. Does that create potentially some other challenges? Maybe, but at least it would provide some cost savings for municipalities that are trying to perform that function.
Have you thought about bringing forward a, a, a resolution on, on burning municipalities?
I can answer that one actually.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so we've been working with, I mean, Calgary's really rallied around this. Both the city of Calgary and the BIAs and the Calgary chamber, um, really want to see this happen. Cause right now, and I, I heard this from your downtown businesses too, one of the challenges is, is that down, uh, vacant properties also don't contribute right now. Cause it's, it's, it's a separate, yeah, it's a separate business tax. So you have to be a business license holder within the district to be levied. So this change would not only save, I mean, for Edmonton, I think it's going to be like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year and cost savings to eliminate this whole business tax thing. Um, so then it'll just be levied just like property taxes. And then from our perspective, it's also great because it kind of forces a contribution from some of the most detrimental property owners in our areas. If they've got a vacant, uh, vacant or derelict building, um, at least they're contributing, uh, to the pool of money for the, the B I. And, and to the other councillor, sorry, I, I don't know your name, but, um, I think the confusion here is that there's, whatever the city spends on administering it, and then what this, what the levy that's actually collected from the businesses is are totally separate. Whatever is collected from the businesses does not go into city administration's control in any way. It's held within the BIA. It's held within an independent nonprofit organization that is fully managed by the businesses. So that hundred thousand in that example is totally separate from any city costs. They get to spend that on, if they want to hire an executive director, if they want to spend it all on building a new website and marketing downtown, whatever they want to spend it on, that's collected from them by the city just procedurally, but it stays separate. And so that's why this is such a powerful tool and a lot more palatable for businesses than just a regular, uh, tax.
Uh, just a, a clarification, uh, the, the comment that the city doesn't, doesn't, um, spend the money or control the money, that, that's true, subject to one important thing. Council approves their budgets. Right? So their, their, their budgets have to be approved by council and like any other entity affiliated with the city, you can't spend beyond your budget. So you do have some control over the spending that way, but I do agree it's not direct, granular, day-to-day control, not at all.
Jump in on, on that, just because it's related. So let's say, let's say the BIA in our downtown of St. Albert wanted to start and they come up with a very, very modest budget for the first year, ten grand. So their, so their taxes on the business is low, just to see how it works test stories. Could the city then say, we're going to gift you another fifty grand from the city budget towards the BIA just to keep your taxes down, your, whatever, the levy down for the first year or two and, and let them get going and build up. And then we would wean them off of our, like, can we add to their pot? I guess is the question. I don't see why not. Yeah.
Yeah, during COVID in Edmonton, actually, our city council voted to cover the entire budget for all of our BIAs in twenty twenty.
Oh, okay.
Without, they didn't collect the BIA levy at all. Uh, they just transferred us the money and it came out of, I guess provincial COVID recovery fund. And then in twenty twenty-one, they covered half of the fees. So it wasn't until here that we went back to collecting the full levy.
I, I would see that as a path that I would be willing to have a debate with this council about is, is giving that support for the first year or two. As they started up, but, and that would probably relieve some anxiety in the businesses.
And if you didn't have the admin, it would be the same thing. You could just contribute that full hundred thousand.
Well, but the admin costs are for the assessment only.
Right, right.
We have to do that. We can't.
But I'm just saying, if we didn't have to do that side of it, that hundred thousand would pay for the whole project for every.
It would save us money or we can. So, but maybe you said that Calgary's been really active in lobbying the provincial government to change this. Where is it at? Like, is it, is there positive momentum? Is there something we can do to add bigger voices?
Yeah, it's a good question. A letter of support will be really helpful. Um, I can connect your, your admin team with the, um, folks at the city of Edmonton who are collecting letters of support, like the Edmonton Chamber, I think wrote one, where we of course are writing one. So I think that whole package just needs to get over to the province.
Okay, we, yeah.
Mayor, Mayor, just so you know, Trevor's got his hand up as soon as that question was asked. Shelley also has her hand up, as do I, just so you know.
Okay, awesome. I just, Panita, I'm not asking as the city St. Albert. I'm asking as president of Alberta municipalities. This is a provincial M G A change that we could easily, but I can't do anything until I get my membership to support it. So a resolution would be something, and I can't do an emergent one. I don't see this as emergent. But next spring, we could easily do, um, get.
I think it might, it might happen before then, but I can definitely, um, keep you.
You mean the legislation might change before then?
Uh, the, the province might get this request and already start considering it. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I don't know. Trevor, then Shelley.
Survey, sorry, was my last.
Yeah. Well, let's just get them to weigh in on this issue of legislation changes. Trevor?
Uh, sorry, I was trying to direct message it, but Mike and Sean are aware of this already. But, uh, we've written a letter to the deputy minister of municipal affairs regarding this topic. And the regulation is set to expire in twenty twenty-four. And so they've indicated that they'll be engaging with us as part of that, uh, review prior to it expiring. But if council wanted to, to get more attention to it, definitely a resolution, uh, is an opportunity there. So sorry, just wanted to.
That's perfect. Okay. Uh, Shelley, did you have something, um, on this front about legislative changes? You, Shelley.
No, not on legislative changes. No.
Okay, I, I'll come back to you in a sec. Cause councillor Maskey has one more question or.
Yeah, it was just the cost of the survey to solicit businesses for this. Do we have?
Yeah, we felt at this stage that was something we could do within our existing budget.
All right. All right, um, councillor Nicolai. I've heard anyone watch you online. Shelley is the, with the Chamber of Commerce here in St. Albert. Go ahead.
Hi, uh, thank you. Um, so I did have an opportunity to speak to a few businesses on this topic on Friday. And what I'm wondering is, like they're, they're concerned about the tax. When you say tax levy, maybe they think they get very, very concerned. Um, and so I want to be clear. So depending on what issue they want to address, depends on the amount of money. The levy. So when we say ten thousand dollars, it could be, it could be anything depending on what the, the twenty-five percent of the businesses decide is the issue.
I would say a hundred percent of the businesses would be part of the decision on the budget or, and the, bring their hands up, sit on the board, you just need twenty-five percent to, to get the legislation done. Yeah.
Is there a specific or like specific problems that we're trying to address with, with the BIA? Or is it more for, um, engagement of the downtown businesses?
I think that might cause that one.
Yeah, I guess I would just say, and I'm, I'm sure, uh, Panita could probably speak to this as well, but really feel that, that BIAs are, are. BIAs are are a tool for businesses, it it gives them them an opportunity to to put their resources together. We just kind of talked about putting pulling our resources from regional perspective, but from a localized business district perspective, you can put your 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 money together. And you also have say over what you want to do with your money, right? So it's it's a it's a tool for the businesses to use if they so choose. To 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 make decisions and decide what issues they want to tackle or what priorities they want to address within their uh district. And I think Sean touched on all the different options, whether that's marketing, whether that's events, whether that's uh dealing with cleanliness or whatever the issue, you know, happens to be. They have the ability to to make that decision collectively as as a business community.
Right, councillor Jolly?
Thank you. I don't have a a question per se, but I just wanted to throw into the room, I'm generally supportive of. Um, polling resident or polling businesses to see if they are interested in this. And I would just hate to get into those administrative details without um knowing if we have support for that first step, so. Yeah, just just throwing that out there.
Um, can I talk a bit about this, is your question?
Yeah, it's okay, you can go first.
The survey that you're proposing, is it? Honestly, because there's so many questions around the BIA, if you if you send out an email with say yes, no, like whatever. I think the businesses are going to hear, it's going to cost me more money and so are you proposing an online survey? Are you proposing actually going door to door and sitting down with the businesses and engaging support that way? Because I think they need a lot of questions answered before they answer the survey. I know there's a lot of business.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know that we've.
Another meeting or something, yeah.
Yeah, piece out all of the the components of the survey, we've been thinking about it, but we recognize, I think at this point, just. Internally with some some departments that we need more thorough engagement on this one, this isn't just a simple, you know, vote yes or no online. They need to understand that this is a tool and how it can be used, the advantages and disadvantages of forming a BIA. So um, we definitely want to have a a number of questions that we put to them, ultimately, we want to know is there enough support? Um, but we feel that there's, we need to provide some more information to them because, you know, there are roughly two hundred businesses and and the level of understanding for all those. Want to make sure that everybody has that baseline to be informed to make a decision ultimately.
I think there's some easily identified champions in our downtown that can probably help get that out before the survey. Because if you survey first and, you know, get twenty five percent, we're dropping it, but they might not have what they need to make the decision, so. I think councillor Hughes has another question.
Yeah, um, that's just the first ones. So Edmonton, how many businesses are in the Edmonton BIA? Maybe I'll look to.
The downtown one?
Downtown, yeah.
So we we have thirteen different BIAs, we have thirteen hundred members just in the downtown BIA. Um, and then from there, I think Old Strathcona would be the next largest, which is about, I want to say four hundred businesses. Um, and then I think one twenty fourth street is probably the next biggest after that.
What's your smallest BIA?
There's actually one, um, there's a Northwest Industrial BIA, which is a really interesting example. I don't know how many businesses it is, but it's quite a small number, and they formed for a very specific purpose. They just wanted to pool their money together for for security and and that kind of thing.
Okay.
It's a very small budget and just a handful of businesses that do that in an industrial park.
Okay, so that's kind of really just a project based type of thing, a specific project as opposed to a a general one. Okay, so thirteen hundred and four hundred is the next one below that. So the question, I'm, I'm going to you guys, so you have, you're listing like a budget fifty to a hundred thousand. And just based on just salaries, et cetera, like, we're looking at one FTE plus minor office costs at that. So I'm I'm trying to figure out if really a hundred thousand's a realistic number, like, not just the first year, but second, third, fourth year. I could see this number growing quite substantially unless we actually think that all we need is one person to accomplish the goals of. Whatever is downtown, whatever their goals are.
I think you have to hire, like, you don't have to.
Well, you're going to have to have somebody administer this.
Or it would.
They're going to probably want executive director, like, I just look at, like, housing and they're like, they don't have exec director, and then they they have issues. So I don't see how like this organization can form without having somebody there to do it. So that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I I can bring uh the Lethbridge, city of Lethbridge, or the downtown BIA as an example, so. Uh, they have around five hundred businesses uh downtown and they have a budget of two hundred thousand.
Okay.
Um, I would say that that's probably your bare minimum for a budget of that that many businesses. Um, but yeah, that's that's what they, and they do rely on their partnerships with the city, of course, there's uh certain. Uh, funding that they they get through the city on on some of these projects that they work together on, but uh that's from their membership, that's that's what they're receiving.
So with their volume and numbers and they're looking at a BIA of about two hundred dollars a business, well, we're looking at more than double that. And um, okay, so the other thing. Well, if they have a budget of two hundred thousand and five hundred businesses, it's two hundred dollars a piece. Whereas we're looking at a hundred thousand, two hundred businesses, reverse the number, it's five hundred dollars a piece. Um, because I just, I'm concerned about especially startup businesses or ones that don't even necessarily need. Like foot traffic to cut in there that are going to just not want to go because it's going to be the cost prohibitive thing. And so like you're concerned about driving businesses away could be real, like, I think that that could be.
I think we need to be really careful, councillor Hughes, we're we're not talking about a budget.
No, but we, what we are discussing is whether or not these people, these businesses are going to be taxed, and even if we subsidize them for a year or two.
But they could just do ten thousand dollar budget and do a website and that could be the end of it forever, like, if this is be up to them.
It, yeah, I understand, but then sometimes you get involved in uh things that you don't, you know, before you know it, it takes off. I'm just trying to figure out what the long term ramifications are as opposed to just the startup ramifications. So if let's say they did it for a year or two, and then for whatever reason they chose not to continue. How would they stop it? Or what would do, is it just fifty percent again, but then you have to dissolve it? So how how would that be the process if they chose after five or ten years to stop doing this?
There is a, so there is a process in the MGA, so in the BIA regulations, they clearly lay out what that process is for dissolving it. And it is, it's a fifty, I wish I remember the number, but it's about fifty some percent that have to vote to dissolve it. And then there's clear procedures laid out for what is done with any outstanding debts um and funds. Um, and then just about your your comment and question about, you know, what the impact is. I think it's standard to be on a sliding scale, we certainly are in Edmonton. So it's based on the square footage you occupy, what the property tax assessment, so however it's assessed through the property tax process, the space they occupy. That's, that also then dictates how much they pay, so not every business contributes the same. Our minimum downtown is a hundred and fifty dollars, so. No matter how small, is contributing a hundred and fifty dollars. And then our largest corporations, we have a cap at eight thousand dollars.
Oh, wow, okay.
There's a minimum and a cap, and that's in the municipal bylaw?
Yes, well, each individual by BIA board has their own minimum and maximum.
Cool, okay, I just, just so people have an idea of like.
Taking one.
I don't want to have everything be rosy and instead of people the record from under them, I don't think you're going to do that, I think, but we're going to give them a really clear perspective. I would suggest, even though the MGA says twenty five percent minimum, that we should be looking at a higher level of buy-in before we would enact it personally. Like, I think a fifty fifty would be probably better, but.
Just just to clarify, like, that it it's it's really the will of the businesses. So they would submit that petition if they have twenty five percent, they could petition and it would be. I would submit it to through the process that Sean highlighted there, so. We have to be, make sure that we we're 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 clear on what that process looks like, and really this is business driven, if they want it or if they don't want it.
I I want to think, we need to make clear that the city, we're not driving this.
We're just.
We're facilitating if they want it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and if I could just take maybe two minutes to just provide some context, because I think it's important to think about. Um, all of the different tools and and options that there are for downtown businesses, different models. Um, I've seen models in other communities where there isn't an unorganized or it's a voluntary voluntary based membership. And so what ends up happening is you might have. Ten or twenty percent of the businesses that put all the time and energy and all the money into putting on activities and events. And the whole district gets the benefit of a few really, you know, um ambitious folks. You know, so so in some ways a BIA can can be more equitable, it may not feel equitable to those that maybe aren't as enthused to participate. But in some ways it does make sure that uh everybody's got some some skin in the game, that does have some contribution, so so are they more inclined to participate? Or to to attend those meetings, to share their opinions and and vote on issues when they're. In some sense, uh, you know, have to 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 provide the membership fees. But that's one thing to consider, and then I think there's there are models where the businesses um aren't involved and the city uh does take all the initiative and all the reins. I think in a, you know, in a best case scenario, you need to have that collaboration. You've got property owners, you've got businesses, you've got the city, you've got residents. I think when you're talking about a a district like a downtown that has these different stakeholders, that they all need to be sort of part of the conversation.
I just have one, I realize this might be conservative, but I know that um we said that everybody would vote. So if there was a, how they're going to spend the money, would it be a board decision or would it be a membership decision?
Board.
Board decision? Okay, so all the members would not have an equal vote on how the money is being spent or where it's being prioritized, it would be a board.
Well, you would, you would be able to take the board, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
City council appoints all the board members. The the budget has to be approved by city council, and it's very clear in the legislation, every business has an opportunity to make representations to city council on the budget. So there there is a, there is that opportunity, if you will, for everyone in the business, in the BIA to uh to have input into how much money they spend and where they spend it.
Okay, but just to reclarate, the businesses don't all decide how it's being spent, the board is deciding how it's being spent.
Well, just like.
Just like.
Yeah, I know. Elected council.
He said a hundred percent of the businesses would have a voice in how it's being spent, just a few minutes ago, and I just want to clarify that's not the case.
They would have input.
They can have input. Okay, cool.
Run for the board.
Yeah, mayor.
I know the board.
I just want to make sure people understand what they're.
Aaron, what are we, I mean, we're, all we're trying to do here today is say that we're looking at this and we're willing to look at this if they're willing to actually get do the majority of the work. And all we're trying to do is measure the interest and moving forward, I mean, all we're saying here today is. We're we're open to you guys coming to us and looking at us because like, uh, like Shelley with the chamber said, what problem are we trying to solve? We don't even know what problem we're trying to solve, we're hoping that the survey does, so I think we're getting way down the rabbit hole here. Let's let's look at the recommendation and then say, do we support the recommendation, then let's go. Otherwise, we're 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 spinning our wheels here and we're finding.
It's good to learn, though, and if.
It it is good to know, but I mean, I mean, these are things that are way down the road.
Yeah, but as I said, I I want the businesses, whether they watch this or talk to our act dev department or talk to Panita um to understand. And so questions are good, but I'd see Mike ready to go, you want to go make the motion?
Yeah.
Oh, you want more question first?
Oh, I was going to make the bottom, but Panita's got to run.
Yeah, thanks, Panita.
Thank you.
My pleasure, thanks, everyone.
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, yes, I'm prepared to make the motion, mayor.
Go ahead.
The committee of the whole recommends to council that in the spirit of fostering a vibrant downtown and facilitating the coordination of downtown businesses. To pass a motion directing the CAO or his step delegates to conduct a survey of the downtown businesses to determine the level of interest. In establishing a BIA for downtown St. Albert and report back to the committee of the hall on the results of the survey, including any administration. Uh, recommendations arising from the results of the survey.
Okay, before I accept that, do you know when you might be back?
At this time.
Okay. Put it in a. I'm I'm thinking Q two of of next year, but not, I'll give you. I'm going to have to, I'll just write it down here for gender reporting, so we'll put it under consideration for Q two of twenty three, okay? Accept the motion, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I think the, go back to March, we we heard a presentation. There was clearly one group that was very vocal in in supporting this, there was another group that. Kind of were shrugging their shoulders, uh, saying we've tried all this, and then there was a large group in the middle. That kind of didn't seem to have an opinion. So this is a way to get get that buy-in from the businesses. Council, we think, you know, we may have some good ideas as to how uh we can improve the downtown. We've offered those over the years through downtown beautification grants. We've tried uh pop-up patio uh bylaw to help our businesses move along. But this is an opportunity for um economic development to go out, survey firsthand. Businesses, not not through the loudest voice, you know, at at the meeting, but to actually count those two hundred businesses and see where they sit. Get that direct feedback. See whether there's twenty five percent interest or not to move forward with this. And then we'll know, right, right now, we have a lot of speculation, we have a lot of of our interpretation of what's best. We have certainly listened to, you know, the chamber that's got a longstanding history with our businesses. And and they brought some voices forward too, so that this is a way to really get to what the next steps are. And uh, and that's it, as councillor Mackay has said, we we don't want to get too far ahead. Without knowing the details of whether we have the businesses' support. So I think this is a great way to do that and uh and move forward. I I I can be sure that if if we do nothing, nothing will change. And that I can guarantee, so this is a great way to do something and get a survey. See whether businesses are interested, and then we'll know. So that's why I'm supporting this uh, the recommended.
Awesome, anyone else?
At this stage of the game, I will not support the motion, and the reason being that if they're changing the funding process or whatever avenues they're going. As the BIRs get more successful, businesses will actively go towards it, and I don't think the twenty five percent is high enough to force a business. So I think we're just a little bit premature in this, I understand it's a good idea, but it's not not fine tuned yet, so.
Anyone else?
Go ahead. Okay, thanks, mayor. Um, you know, I'm going to support this because I think we, it's good to get that feedback, and I'm looking, and I know there's a lot of questions asked today, but the reason is because we want to make sure that people are educated about their decision. They don't go forward with it thinking it's completely rose colored or thinking it's really bad, so that they understand how to get in, how to get out, what are with the reasonable expectations moving forward. Um, and that way they're making an educated decision to survey, because asking if they have just a general idea about it, is this different than actually facing the consequences of moving forward on that? Especially because the bar is at only twenty five percent, it's rather low. So I'm definitely making sure that the um businesses understand what they're agreeing to or not agreeing to, I think is very important. And I and I think that getting that feedback, just to see. Just, you know, read the temperature of the room type of thing is going to be necessary before, and and it may be a yes, it may be a no, I respect either way. I just want to make sure they clearly understand they're doing, and then they make the decisions, they're comfortable with ramifications moving forward or not moving forward. Um, so I think that that's um, but we won't know until we ask, and you're doing it in the current budget, so, you know, I think that it's worth having that discussion.
Anyone else? Well, I'm completely supportive and I hope, I honestly hope the businesses see the advantage of a BIA um as they as they talk to you and and fill out the survey. There's no committing to in the survey, there'd still be the formal package that they would have to submit to the city. I feel, I feel like there was a lot of interest when we met with the downtown businesses, they just need a little bit of help. Honestly, they're so busy trying to keep their doors open and and staffing that they don't have time to do this on their own. So I think with the help from our act dev department, it's it's the exact right direction, but not forcing them, just just kind of helping them. Um, I agree completely with what councillor Kilk said, if we don't do anything, nothing will change. We can have plans like for Saskatchewan has, they're just plans, you need to actually do something and you, and sometimes that needs. Coordination and that coordination sometimes comes with finances. Um, I heard from so many great downtown businesses that they've been there, done that. They've been part of, I think it was called the downtown business. And then it came part of the chamber, parent street committee, whatever, um, and they, you're right, five, ten, twenty percent of them put in so much time and effort trying to rally the businesses. And now they're just um exhausted, and so they need some, they need, we need to get those people back as champions. And uh, and to get the rest of the downtown participating, whether it's just a levy tax once a year. But hopefully, if we actually went down this route, we'd have lots of people splitting their hand up to be on the board, so I think this is exciting. And this is, this is what I heard when we met in March, that they wanted to move forward with it, so.
Uh, yeah, just to close, um, the only thing I would say is maybe we don't want to use the word tax. I I think this is a a fee or a contribution. So doing a survey to find out whether they want to contribute to their a fund. That will help their their own success downtown, I think is that important first step. a fund that will help their, their own success downtown, I think is that important first step. And, uh, I hope, I hope we all support it, uh, for, for all of our businesses in the downtown.
Okay, call for the vote. Scary by majority with councillor Bransky opposed. Uh, do you need, yeah, why don't we take a break? Is, is lunch here?
Supposed to be at twelve noon.
Okay, so why don't we take a break and have a quick bit to eat and we'll come back around twelve thirty. Councillor Jolly, does that work for you? Okay. And then we'll get on to the, rest of the rest of the agenda. Pretty late, I would say.
There we are.
Now we are.
Natalie, just so you know, I probably won't be able to get to Mournville on the 19th.
Okay.
Because the Legion's doing a memorial for the Queen.
But you'll go to the Mournville, right? Well, I'm there as the board chair, not kind of on behalf of council. So I don't know if anyone else is wanting to go.
Okay, I'll find it.
Deputy Mayor.
Want somebody?
I can follow up to see what's happening with the invitations.
Okay, perfect. Okay. That means we have to move our one-on-one on Monday. If that works, you might want to come to the memorial. We're back. Who's doing? Oh, Danielle's coming. 55 plus or the Alberta Games funding and governance. Danielle's online. Hi Danielle.
Good morning or good afternoon, I guess, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, great. Well, I'm just actually here to introduce Craig Cameron, who's going to present our report on the Alberta Summer and/or the Alberta Games and the 55-plus game. So with that, I'll turn it over to Craig Cameron, our manager of community recreation.
Thanks, Danielle. Can everybody see the presentation?
Yep.
Good. Thanks. So this is a follow-up to council's request to look at the feasibility of two different multi-sport games opportunities. I'll just call them games from here on in because it's a little easier than multi-sport games. So we looked at the Alberta Summer/Winter Games and Alberta 55-plus Summer/Winter Games. We did a bit of a history on games in St. Albert. We had a chance to look at some of our inventories. We met with some of the different games representatives of the host groups and also did a survey of our business community, some of our sport and service groups as well. So you see all of that wrapped up into the report today. Just a little history there. So we did have done the games opportunities here before, back to 1979 with the first one being an Alberta Summer Games and the most recent in 2012 was a national Special Olympics event. So all these games opportunities are sport tourism events. There's kind of three different reasons that municipality might get into this. Reputational opportunities through games, social outcomes and economic impacts as well. I'll just note here that with the economic impacts in particular, we would see some of the impact being distributed regionally. Well, St. Albert has great facilities to host all the games activities where we would look to the region would be around our hospitality in particular, and some of those games would be within the region. Games at a glance. So council's seen this before. They're kind of the two different games opportunities are on different scales. The Alberta Games are larger events. They have the potential to bring in more economic impact to the region, but also require more investment from the city or more investment generally to pull them off. The 55-plus games is a little bit different than when they were hosted here in St. Albert back in 2011. They're a little smaller scale than they were at that time. Still a great sport tourism opportunity, but just a little smaller in terms of investment and impact. The numbers that you see here, just to note here, so these numbers come from most of the games hosts themselves. On the Alberta game side, these numbers are developed through a STEAM model. So that's a sport tourism economic impact model. It's fairly well-used across Canada. The 55-plus numbers are provided by the organization based on their own analysis. It's not through this team. I mentioned we did some community engagement. So we did a survey.
There we are.
Now we are.
Natalie, just so you know, I probably won't be able to get to Mournville on the 19th.
Okay.
Because the Legion's doing a memorial for the Queen. But you'll go to the Mournville, right?
Well, I'm there as the board chair, not kind of on behalf of council. So I don't know if anyone else is wanting to go.
Okay, I'll find it.
Deputy Mayor.
Want somebody?
Need somebody?
Is that a yes?
Oh, I can follow up to see what's happening with the invitations.
Okay, perfect. Okay. That means we have to move our one-on-one on Monday. If that works, you might want to come to the memorial. We're back. Who's doing? Oh, Danielle's coming. Fifty-five plus or the Alberta Games funding and governance. Danielle's online. Hi, Danielle.
Good morning or good afternoon, I guess, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, great. Well, I'm just actually here to introduce Craig Cameron, who's going to present our report on the Alberta summer and or the Alberta Games and the fifty-five plus game. So with that, I'll turn it over to Craig Cameron, our manager of community recreation.
Thanks, Danielle. Can everybody see the presentation?
Yep.
Good. Thanks. So this is a follow-up to council's request to look at the feasibility of two different multi-sport games opportunities. I'll just call them games from here on in because it's a little easier than multi-sport games. So we looked at the Alberta Summer/Winter Games and Alberta fifty-five plus Summer/Winter Games. We did a bit of a history on on games in St. Albert. We had a chance to look at some of our inventories. We met with some of the different games representatives of the the host groups and and also did a survey of our business community, some of our sport and service groups as well. So you see all of that wrapped up into the report today. Just a little history there. So we did have done the games opportunities here before, back to nineteen seventy-nine, with the first one being an Alberta Summer Games, and the most recent in twenty-twelve was a national Special Olympics event. So all these games opportunities are sport tourism events. There's kind of three different reasons that municipality might get into this. Reputational opportunities through games, social outcomes and economic impacts as well. I'll just note here that with the with the economic impacts in particular, we would see some of the the impact being distributed regionally. Well, St. Albert has great facilities to host all the games activities where we would look to the region would be around our hospitality in particular, and some of those games would be within the region. Games at a glance. So council's seen this before. They're kind of the two different games opportunities are on different scales. The the Alberta Games are larger events. They have the potential to to bring in more economic impact to the region, but also require more investment from from the city or more investment generally to to pull them off. The fifty-five plus games is a little bit different than when they were hosted here in St. Albert back in in twenty-eleven. They're a little smaller scale than they were at that time. Still a great sport tourism opportunity, but just a little smaller in terms of investment and impact. The numbers that you see here, just to note here, so these numbers come from from most of the the games hosts themselves. On the Alberta game side, these numbers are developed through a STEAM model. So that's a sport tourism economic impact model. It's fairly well-used across Canada. The fifty-five plus numbers are provided by the organization based on their own analysis. It's not through this team. I mentioned we did some community engagement. So we did a survey of over six hundred and fifty businesses, sport groups and service groups in the community and got some feedback from them. Eighty-eight, one percent of the respondents on the survey thought that the games opportunity would help to increase St. Albert's reputation or promote it as a place to do business. Sixty-six percent of those who responded thought that their organization or or business might get a a direct benefit from from hosting a games here in St. Albert's. And I do note that with some of the feedback on it, while generally positive, there was a hope at least that if St. Albert was to, you know, be successfully hosted games and they would take into account a way to be as efficient or as effective as possible in in the investments that they made in the community. Some key milestones that council should be aware of on here. So it is a can be a five to six-year process from having interest in a games to actually hosting the games themselves. So it is a bit of a a long trajectory here. At this point, if council was interested, I've kind of highlighted the areas where council is most involved in the process. It begins with a recommendation or motion from council to pursue a bid for a particular games. And so that identifying a particular game is just important to align the right kinds of of requests and timelines there. If council made that motion, we would also seek funding to support bid development itself and the creation of a bid committee. The bid committee, local bid committee, is typically a nonprofit organization that operates at arm's length to the municipality. The advantage to that model is that as a nonprofit, it's able to access funding that municipality wouldn't, sometimes also be able to attract different kinds of investments or or leverage different kind of opportunities to advance a games bid. The second key milestone for council there, it's actually, or the third one, I suppose, it's identified as the local bid committee there, but actually, there's a major significant role for council to play at that step. This is when a bid has been developed and before it's submitted to to the host group, to the agency there. The the local host committee would come back to council with the fully developed bid and seek at that time endorsement for kind of municipal responsibilities that are outlined in the bid package. So it's a bit of a gated approach to a game submission. If the bid goes forward at that point in time, council would be responsible, I suppose, for the commitments that were identified in the bid package, and then we'd work forward through a selection process. And if selected, then there'd be a couple of years to actually host the games themselves. And so that's why we get into that five to six-year timeline from interest to actual games completion. We've done some high-level budget work on the games themselves. I the the numbers here again are based on information that was shared from both of the the games groups. So building off previous models there, we've gone with higher estimates. Again, recognizing that just the economic climate is different than it was two or three years ago. So we've opted to to use their highest targets for our budget development. The three items that are highlighted here, the two in yellow would be direct municipal contributions to a games hosting. So that contribution would come in two ways. Ones would be just be a capital contribution. The other would be a value-in-kind contribution to a games, which could be through deferred costs on on facility rentals, or it could be through staff time dedicated to the event. In green, we've highlighted the the facility here, and the word facility used there on the expense side is intentional. In reviewing our our current facilities, we don't see a need for significant capital investment. Our historic investments in the city have have put us in a good position to host the games. What those dollars would be for would be for kind of augmenting our existing facilities to be able to meet the specific sport demand. So we bringing in things in an overlay-type scenario. With all that, we did a ranking of the four games opportunities there. So we looked at the different factors in terms of budget and resources. We looked at the potential impacts and outcomes from from the games, but going back to those three main focuses discussed earlier. We also looked at some of the risks associated with hosting a games, and based on our internal analysis, we've ranked the the four four games opportunities as shown on the screen there, suggesting primarily with the Alberta fifty-five plus games, there is a lower impact to to staffing resources and obviously to our to our finances as well. And then that was probably the the biggest difference between our first and second place rankings there. With the three and four, the bigger difference there would have just been weather as a risk factor. So recognizing that with the changes that we're seeing in climate patterns, there could be additional risks to hosting a winter game that you wouldn't see in the summer scenario there. With that, I will stop my presentation and turn it over to to council for any questions.
Um, Craig, I'm kind of, I still don't understand. So I'm on page seventeen of one hundred and nine or page three of four of your report, the little ranking sheet. Why? I'm looking mostly at the fifty. The, I guess it's summer versus winter. So if you why is some of it modest reputation building? So you got Alberta fifty-five summer is modest. But I know, so the, so you think the fifty-five plus is less reputational building for St. Albert?
Sure. I think the the biggest difference there in terms of the reputational building is comes back to the number of participants, the projected attendees, and then just the the, I'll say, public or provincial awareness around the games opportunities. With the Alberta Games being larger, both in terms of attendance and delegates and promotion in the process, we felt that it would have a kind of better reach and awareness around building some of those advancing, I guess, some of those reputational elements.
And then same same with the economic impact, just more people, higher impact.
Yep.
Did you look at all at the the special game, Special Olympics, either winter or summer? Because we hosted that as well, and I thought that was fantastic. I'm just wondering if you explored that opportunity.
Yeah, not as part of of this review. We did stick to the the four games identified by council.
Okay. Great questions. Oh, go ahead, Natalie.
Thanks. So um, I'm I'm a little bit confused about the recommendations. So if if we just kind of accept this report as information.
What next?
Yeah. So are you looking? I I got the sense that you're looking for direction on, you know, yes, let's go for Alberta fifty-plus Summer Games. Did I misread that?
I think that's a fair, I guess, through the Chair to Council, Julie, that would be a fair assumption. Based on the nature of the report, we didn't want to presume council's direction. So we provided our ranking for recommendation and would look to council for direction on a on a particular games bid to to work towards.
So ideally, kind of the motion would be that, you know, we direct you to to go for whichever games and that funding in in such and such an amount is provided for twenty-twenty-three. Is that kind of what we're looking at?
Yeah, I believe that would be helpful. I think we have some potential motions drafted, if that's a a direction council would like to go in.
I'd I'd certainly be curious about the funding request for twenty-twenty-three. Should the number one ranking be selected by council? That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, and I wouldn't mind knowing what financial implications are for your staff for rankings one and two, actually. So that would be the Alberta fifty-five plus summer and then the Alberta Summer Games.
Yeah, right here. I have the number two. So maybe I can just add into that through through the chair that we were looking, what we were looking at is producing a motion that would really have it, that we would prepare a business case. If you gave us direction, we would prepare a business case that would go as part of the budget process for the twenty-three to include the timelines to create a bid package for a certain games at the direction of council.
Yeah. So on page thirty, you have a budget. So is the bid development part just what we're looking at for twenty-three?
Yeah, at this point, the only financial ask would be for bid development, and then any larger requests would come as a as a product of that bid development process and and would be approved by council before any submissions are made to to the games hosting committee.
So you you have some potential motions then?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay, let's do questions before we get to motions. Anyone else? Go ahead, Gina and Julie.
Okay, um, so let's just go on that page thirty, just go through the numbers a little bit. So I got the bid developments ten because we had that. And then potentially, if we go to the first and second, we could be up to a total of maybe like what are we looking at? Maybe forty total over the course of three years. So the facility, that would just be a donation in kind, right? We'd just be offering it in kind. Is that correct? Like the fifty thousand or I'm looking at fifty-five plus games. So just focus on the recommendation. So it says expenses facility fifty grand. So I'm assuming is that we're renting it or we're offering it?
To the Chair to to Counselor Hughes. So an important distinction to make, I guess, just for reference in looking at the budget. This budget assumes that there is a local hosting organization. So all the expenses there would be those incurred by that local host hosting organization. When it comes to the municipal, direct municipal investment in that, we see that on the revenue side. And so that's for the fifty-five plus. That's right now in the budget twenty-five thousand in 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 a capital contribution or cash contribution, and then an additional fifteen thousand in in V I K.
What is V I K?
Uh, V I K. So it's value in kind. It would be things like deferred rental on our our facilities, or it could be staff time directed towards event support.
So you said you were assuming that another organization is basically going to take over. I'm thinking of sort of the the Children's Festival type. Do we have anything in mind of who wants to do this, or how would we form that to make it go ahead?
Through the Chair to Counselor Hughes, there are, I say, typical structures that we would follow or models that we would follow to build our committee. At this time, we haven't done the work to to build that committee structure.
Okay.
Or to identify.
Yeah, well, we should put the cart first.
Yeah.
So but it's not going to be a hindering block. We we know how to do it. We can make it happen, get that community going. I I guess the other thing I'm wondering is, why are we doing it through committee and not just doing it through admin? Because they obviously have the other expenses that we could always absorb. Is it just we don't have the manpower to handle this or?
I I think it's all different, but it's two issues. One is is capacity. Certainly, the other is actually best practices. These are actually put together by committees.
Okay.
I don't, Craig and Danielle, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I know we're just, this is just like, we're just guessing here on some of it, like just based on past history. I just, the one thing I just don't seem to get is why would the sponsorship be so much less? Like, is it just because they wouldn't be able to charge as much because they have fewer people? Because it just seems like it's a significant decrease. I I, what was the rationale behind that? When you look at the revenue?
Through through the Chair to Counselor Hughes, those those numbers there were reflective of the the scale of the two different games opportunities. So with the the Summer Games or the Alberta, yeah, the other, the Alberta Games opportunities, it's a a larger number of participants, a larger number of spectators, potentially a larger reach. And so that's why the the
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why the number is larger there for those than than the fifty-five plus games.
So and those are based on other municipalities' actual results? Okay, so we're basing it on what's happened in the past. Okay, got it. So really, though, when we say two hundred thousand, St. Albert's, actually, St. Albert's actual expected contribution right now is actually fifty. All of the total expenses to do will be two hundred. Out of a pocket would be fifty over the course of five four years. Well, all of it, all at the very bottom is fifty, right? So if we were to put it forward, from the taxpayers' perspective, we're looking at fifty thousand dollars. Am I reading that right, or am I missing something?
Through the Chair to Counselor Hughes, that's that's correct.
Okay. Okay, because that's
So where does it say municipal funds at thirty-five?
Thirty, okay, let's go through that then. So why does it say municipal funds at thirty-five and then the cost of it at fifteen? I mean, I get value in that. That's like, I guess, indirect cost, but it says municipal funds thirty-five. And then it says the total cost for this is fifty. So is it actually eighty-five, or can you break it down for us a little bit?
Yeah, so she's looking at the table six and table seven comparing.
I'm just trying to put them back into one spot in my my brain. So.
So I think the total is the municipal funds plus the the V I K. So adding those together is a total of fifty thousand dollars.
And you just got the thirty-five split into installments.
Correct.
Okay.
Craig, is that a fair assessment of that?
Yeah, that's correct. I was just reorienting myself to table seven.
Yeah, and then it adds up. So just so we're absolutely.
It's how that valuation is broken down over the five years of the of the submission process and the hosting process.
Okay, makes sense. I think the public likes the idea of two fifty over two hundred a lot more. So it's good. Thank you. So you have questions?
Thank you. The only question I had is, which is the smallest municipality or mid-sized city or whatever that's ever hosted the Alberta Games?
So. Oh, through the Chair to Counselor Bromansky. That's an excellent question. I would have to look into that.
Anyone smaller than St. Albert that you know of?
Or even
like Spruce Grove, Laduke, have they ever done it?
I I wouldn't want to guess without doing some homework.
I know they, I I could I could add to that, that I know they have been hosted by municipalities of our size, but I think some host them regionally. So there's different variations on how they host. So I think that to Craig's point is that just something we could do some more digging. If you wanted some examples of municipalities smaller than us that hosted before, we could certainly pull that for you.
And the only other question is, is say you host the fifty-five plus games, is that beneficial in your application for other games following that you start out smaller? And does that help you be successful in gaining future games?
Through the Chair to Counselor Bromansky, that would be typically seen as as an asset, certainly for St. Albert in future games bid. As as mentioned before, we do have some history of this kind of activity, but certainly having something more recent would would help us in in future bids as well.
Just offer, sorry. According to Google, the Alberta fifty-five plus website lists the host cities, Camrose, Grand Prairie, Vermilion, Hidden, Medicine Hat, La Colne, St. Paul, Three Hills, Old Stitzbury, Lethbridge, Fort Mac. So a number of smaller communities have success.
She was talking about the Alberta Games.
It's the Alberta, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm on the Alberta Games and I don't
Laduke, Strathmore, Airdri.
Are you in the
Fairview?
Games or fifty-five?
No, this is the Alberta Games.
List them off?
Oaktocks, Erdri, Rocky Mountain House, Clear, Clearwater County, with Buffalo, Grand Prairie, Laduke, Medicine Hat, Strathmore, Lethbridge, Erdri, Banff slash Canmore, Barhead slash Westlock, Calgary, Lethbridge, Spruce Grove, Stony Plain, Parkland, Fairview, St. Albert back in two thousand and eleven was the fifty-five plus. Peace River, Grimshaw was the Summer Games in twenty-ten. Honeyville, Cold Lake. Summer Games, Medicine Hat, Winter Games, Laduke. Summer Games, Red Deer. Summer Games, twenty-oh-two is Camrose.
Okay, so we would be fairly large and fairly capable of doing this. Council, okay?
I I just going back to legacy, and I know that, I mean, we still have Games Legacy Grant. We had.
Yeah.
We had a Games Legacy Grant, and that was out of us hosting a previous Alberta Games or
Alberta.
So I mean, have we looked at any of the recent returns on revenue? I know big events never seem to actually have the return that that actually leaves a legacy. Have we done any research in preparing the background report on on kind of any legacy funds that have been left with the hosting community in in recent in recent times?
It's through the Chair to Council, Mackay. I would I would say, looking back at past game financial reports, break even is a is a good benchmark for the games, and and the real return and legacy comes in in the reputational or in some of the social returns to the community from games hosting.
And 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 the economic benefit during the games, right, as to bringing in people. So I was just, I was just curious because we did identify Games Legacy in past, so.
Any more questions?
And one more question. So I mean, I know we were approached last term by a representative from one of the games. I can't remember the gentleman's name and I apologize, just didn't grab it right out of my head here. But I mean, so you're anticipating that this would, we'd be bidding on twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight? Regardless kind of what the recommendation coming out of today's committee of the whole meeting?
Through the chair to councillor Mackay, yeah, that's the case. Just looking at our timelines for bid development and then the game selection processes. The twenty seven would be a good target for us.
Have you guys reached out to actually any of the administration that puts on or awards these? I mean, is that? Was that part of your background?
Yeah, we did have a chance to talk with the administration on both sides to understand what was involved in hosting a games as well as a bid. And the kinds of things that they would be looking for from a successful host community as well.
So and have all the other dates up till twenty twenty seven? Have they all, have they been awarded sites already?
I I could confirm that. I believe twenty four, which is the next Alberta Games. They were still looking for a host in that one and then into the process already. So we missed the deadline on the process for the the twenty six for the Alberta Games.
Okay, alright. Okay, yeah, just I would just saying that, I mean, is there specific gates that we would have to apply by or notify them? And I mean, I mean, when we're building this, we're building it for twenty twenty seven. Like, we wouldn't be able to say, oh, we'll fill in for twenty twenty five or whatever, just cost, cost wise.
Yeah, I would say our assumption would be that we would follow the the typical process and timelines for a games bid and and accepting submission. One never knows what happens in between, but we're anticipating a typical process for for those games.
And just to confirm, even though what we would do if we looked at one of the recommendations that you are putting forward. We're really only talking about administration preparing a business case for the twenty twenty three budget. Regardless of, I mean, the decision today would be to to bring forward something, but we still could make a decision point as part of the budget, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think that last question was my question. So a potential off ramp for for council still is, even if we made, passed a motion to give you. Go do a bid, for example, or develop a business case around a bid. We still have that off ramp at that point in time to say, yeah, maybe we shouldn't do this. That is, is that what I heard correctly you say to councillor Mackay?
Yeah, through the chair to councillor Broadhead, that's correct. So there are those two gates, I guess, for council for decision making. One is to develop a bid and the second is actually around submitting the bid. So there's an opportunity to reevaluate before the bid is submitted.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
This is clarification. So you're, when I'm looking at what's on our screen in front of us, Craig, and I don't know if you can actually see that. But I mean, so we're we're not, are we being asked to potentially identify? One or the other of the two options, Alberta Games or and summer winter? And are the fifty five plus games today or are we asking you just to come back with those business cases?
Through the chair to councillor Mackay, I think I might defer the process there. I will just add that what we will need at some point from council is a clear direction on which games. Whether it's the fifty five plus summer or winter or the Alberta Game Summer or Winter that council would work to develop a bid on and a year for that. So I'll let someone else fill in the rest of the answer.
What I mean, I guess, question to Mr. Fletcher is, how much administration time is, can, I mean, can you do both? Can you provide a council with a business case for all of the options or is that too much to ask? And you would ask more direction from committee of the whole?
We'd certainly prefer one or the other and defer in terms of the ability to do both might be stretching. Having said that. Ideally, today we would leave with direction to prepare a single business case.
They are quite different games and so it would be important to choose which one council is interested in, winter, summer, fifty five, Alberta. We'd like that direction. And then in terms of process, I think to your question, councillor Mackay. If this motion goes forward today, we prepare a business case that will be part of the twenty three budget. At time you could. For the the bid process to start in twenty three. Or you could not. So by the time you could decide you didn't want to approve that.
No, I, that's fine. I'm just seeking, I mean, there's a great deal of information here and I understand that there's pros and cons and there's expenses and either or. But I wasn't sure if there was additional information that could tip the decision one way or the other, basically. I mean, yes, the Alberta Games is a is a bigger cost, but the impact is also bigger, right? On both sides of it. The and whereas fifty five plus is kind of like, whatever, you know. It's something that is more of a social kind of aspect to me in my, 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 my thinking. So I'm just, I was just kind of saying if we're still can kick the bit, kind of have that decision as part of budget. I myself would like to see what are they, what are the impacts from both? Or what could be the benefit to our community from hosting something as large as Alberta Games? Realizing that there is a bigger cost upfront. There might be a bigger lasting legacy too.
So through the chair to councillor Mackay, I think that's what we were trying to achieve with the feasibility study was to come back with a neutral perspective from an administrative point of view. We can provide a, you know, put forward a business case for any of those bid packages, but it allows us to share with you kind of what some of the benefits are to the different kinds of games. Neither are better or worse, they're just different and it really depends on the the decision of council as to what they want to achieve from games hosting opportunity. And we didn't want to presume any outcomes, I guess, on behalf of council and wanted to present those all to you so you could make an informed decision on on how you wanted us to proceed.
Good comment, but I guess for me to make an informed decision, I I think a business case would contain more information than just kind of a backgrounder in relation to general information for purposes of a committee of the whole.
I I would say one thing for council to consider, you know, if you weren't sure where you wanted to go, I would recommend you tell us to get on with the larger, more complex business case. Because it's easier to scale back than it is to scale up. So that being said, I would recommend then that if we repair one, we repair the Alberta Games. And if come budget time, that was not ultimately what council wanted, it would be easier for us to scale that back to a financial game than the other way around.
Yeah.
How would that motion look?
I'm interrupting Shelley's questions.
I'm going to go to Shelley right away.
Well, I mean, wouldn't it, wouldn't it just be the first one then, that business case be prepared in consultation approval of twenty twenty include timelines associated to? And then just say to host.
You would want to have the.
Alberta Games in twenty twenty eight or whatever it is, twenty twenty seven. And then, and then. But I would anticipate based on what you just said, Mr. Fletcher, is is that included in that business case would be the, you know, the lesser included charge of of of, or using my police days, lesser included offense of of the Alberta fifty five games.
Well, I think you could choose some commonalities. If ultimately a budget, you'd approve the lesser amount for the fifty five plus games, we could use some of that work. We'd have to retool it a little bit, but it would be less and less complex ultimately than this.
So we're not credit motions yet.
No, no, I was just.
You want to make that motion?
Oh, no, I want to, I just was asking whether or not administration saw that would be a a a big ask. Or if they were looking, I mean, and I'm, I'm, but I I'm prepared to make it, but depending on what comments would be.
Just the one question I have here, Oketoks and Black Diamond are hosting in twenty twenty three and it says they're from the twentieth to the twenty third of July. And in your documentation, you've got three days for Alberta fifty five or four to seven days. So how's it decided whether it's four days or seven days? Because that could make a big difference in the cost of the event as well.
Through the chair to councillor Bromanski, the the four to seven days would depend on the host city's facility capacity. In St. Albert, we have sufficient capacity, we believe, to be able to host a four game or four day game version.
Okay, would you be able to see the budget from Oketoks? Is that accessible to you or not?
Not at this time. When the games have concluded, they would do a reporting and that would be publicly posted on the game's website.
Okay, I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
All right, Mike, did you have another question?
Yeah. In term, in terms of summer versus winter, there's certainly a risk hosting either one of the games in in the winter. As we said, weather can be very unpredictable and. So that that to me is a very big risk with, you know, climate change getting worse all the time. The other, my question is around getting the number of volunteers to support this administration. We we put up a, you know, support a bid, we turn it over to an organization of volunteers to run and execute. Is there a bigger risk or is it more difficult to get volunteers during the the winter games than the summer event? I'm I'm honestly thinking about a lot of snowbird, you know, people that would typically volunteer to help host these things. Are not here. Because it it could play a big factor in whether we look at a winter game versus a summer game.
Through the chair to councillor Killick, in in looking at the number of volunteers required to host either the games opportunities. Our focus is more on the the general number of volunteers required and and less on the seasonal availability of of those volunteers.
We we don't, we haven't done a a risk assessment of whether there would be those volunteers available in the wintertime.
Well, that's part of the business.
Through the chair to councillor Killick, you know, and you're looking at the Alberta Summer Games, it's not an insignificant number of volunteers that are needed to support that. So knowing that it's a volunteer committee that would, you know, a bid committee that would put that together in the local organizing committee. Certainly administration would be there to support that committee, but it would be, no matter when you're doing it, whether it's summer or winter, it's not an insignificant task to recruit, you know, two thousand volunteers. It is a significant amount of work, so it is something to consider. Either way, it could be dealing with snowbirds in the winter and summer could be summer holidayers. So it's it's a bit of a a piece of work that we'd have to work through in the coming years, but it's it is a significant amount of work to recruit volunteers for an event of that magnitude, either way.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So you mentioned that if you did the Alberta Games business case that you could scale it back. So would it really be that much work to just do one for the Alberta Games and one for the fifty five plus? You're going to say this is what it is and then the scale back? Because my concern is that we're now focusing on the Alberta Games. And we don't really necessarily know the benefit or the. I I personally, I like the fifty five plus better. It's less of an investment for the city and I think it would still do very well. But I understand we're now just testing the Alberta Games. So is it possible to do that and then say, here's the scaled back version of the other one or?
I I don't think it's that elegant. I think the scale, you you would leverage elements of one, you'd still have to do a separate analysis on some of the specifics of the fifty five. It won't be one nested within the other. It will be indicative, I believe.
So I'm just, I don't think that being a business case then for Alberta Games helps us figure out how to do the Alberta fifty five plus, is what I'm hearing.
Not a hundred percent.
No, so we really should pick a lane here is what I would suggest that we do. And personally, I'm willing to bring forward a motion to do it for fifty five plus.
Just have a clarification question.
Yeah.
As a point of interest, St. Albert back in nineteen seventy five did the Summer Games.
Yeah.
And then we've done the Winter Games a couple of times, I believe here, if I'm looking at it correctly. So back in nineteen seventy nine, because I moved here in eighty, we were thirty thousand. So I imagine the scale would have been back, but it's not beyond our community's capacity to do it. But we've also just done the Winter Games too, so.
Can I ask fifty five plus? Yeah, thanks. I I agree. I think we can do it, but I mean, I'm just reading on the page twenty three here, Craig, in case you're, oh, sorry, Mr. Cameron. It so if successful in getting the Alberta Games, we qualify for a significantly higher grant. I recognize costs are more, but there's a automatic grant that we would get a four hundred and twenty K versus a much less grant in the fifteen thousand range if we were able to get the Alberta fifty five games. I mean, I'm pretty sure if we apply for it, we're going to get it, right?
Through through the chair to councillor Mackay, so with the Alberta Games, that provincial funding is guaranteed to the host community. Yeah. With the fifty five plus games, that any grant funding that came in would have to be, it's not as secure, I guess, it would be based on application.
So we automatically, if we're successful in getting the bid for the Alberta Games, we automatically get a four hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant.
Correct. Just to be clear, I guess it would be the local host committee would get that grant, but it would come into the community.
No, yeah, fair, fair distinction, because again, we want to separate the fact that we would create an LLC. Okay.
I just researched here and it shows there's eight zones for the Alberta fifty five and we have to participate within our zone. So there's not that, you know, I mean, we're in the Edmonton kind of the, there's not that many particular areas that it could be hosted at. So does each zone in Alberta get that funding or is it divided somehow?
So through the to the chair to councillor Bromanski, the the zoning for, are you talking about the fifty five plus games? Just to clarify. So they do have zones within that. There is a process where the zone would recommend a community within its own to be a host committee. From what I understand of the process, it's a fairly collaborative process to to get the zone endorsement to be the the community from your zone that would go forward.
Such as part of the process?
So each zone gets a funding then, is what you're saying?
No.
So the the funding is is directly related to the host committee and to the hosting community.
Okay.
No, the zones.
For how you qualify to attend the game.
Yeah, the zones are how you get into the game. I heard you guys, I heard you guys were putting in a team, a team.
He wants us to win.
Councillor Chella, can I hear?
So just related to the grant, is the four hundred thousand that would go to Alberta Games, that would not decrease the amount the city's putting forward? It would just decrease the overhead from the organization, correct? So the nine hundred and fifty five thousand estimate would still be the same regardless of the grant. Is that correct? Or is our?
That's correct.
Four hundred. Okay. So cost, either way, it's going to cost us nine hundred and fifty grand. And the other one will be fifty thousand net. Right?
To the chair, just Mayor Hearn, if if it is the desire of council for us to produce two business cases, we could do that. To to Mr. Fletcher's point, it is additional administrative work. But the level of detail is probably going to be fairly consistent to what you're going to see in the report in terms of the information we're going to provide in the business case. So it's probably not a ton more rigor for us to do that. But if you'd rather debate this at at budget time, we could prepare two business cases, one outlining an Alberta Summer Games, one outlining an Alberta fifty five plus Summer Games. If that's the preference of council, we could prepare that. But just to, just to be completely transparent, the level of detail would stay fairly consistent to what's in the report that we've provided at this time. Because that's the level of detail we'd be able to give into the business case.
Okay. Do you need indication of winter or summer? Because I think on this proposed motion that just says fifty five plus and Alberta Games.
I think that would be helpful to to us in terms of preparing the information and also just to put it in future work plans so that we can have the timing, timing outlined.
Well, you know, we're not in debate, but I just don't want us to eliminate the possibilities of the Alberta Games. It's got way bigger impact, way bigger reputational. Is there, is there a possibility to partner with Sturgeon County or Mournville?
To the chair, I think some regional collaboration will be valuable regardless of the games opportunity that that we went forward with. And then the particular opportunities we would kind of explore once we had some direction from council.
Okay. I'll put it forward for both.
Yeah.
Councillor Hughes is going to put forward the motion that we see on the screen, I think.
Let's make this meeting move forward. Okay, that the committee of whole recommends that council pass the motions directing, I'm going with summer, just so you know over there.
I like summer.
That a summer business case be prepared for consideration as part of council's approval of the twenty twenty three budget to include the timelines associated with. And the dollars required to support development of a bid on behalf of City St. Albert to host the. And the dollars required to support development of a bid on behalf of City Snobert to host the fifty-five plus, uh, and
Or.
And or. Or just fifty-five plus or. Or just or, actually no and.
And, yeah, I would just get rid of, yeah.
Alberta Summer Games in twenty twenty-seven. And that the proposed bid along with other, any other financial commitments required are presented to council prior to submission to the bid of the bid.
Are there, do we have the years correct? Could I just, are they both on the same year?
It would be either or for the same year.
I'm seeing Danielle's. Danielle, let's get the right years in here.
Craig, I'd like to bypass you. I believe the fifty-five plus is twenty twenty-seven and the Alberta Summer Games would be twenty twenty-eight. So just to be clear.
Okay.
You want or change to and, wouldn't you?
Pardon?
You want or chance to and?
Okay, you want and?
Plus and, because you want both business cases, don't you?
Okay, yeah.
Whereas we're gonna give you one or the other.
Okay, we'll put, we'll move it to and, whatever.
Just up.
Just so you got, yeah.
It's not gonna host both.
Yeah, I just, yeah, just so you're clear, we're not committing to both, because you guys look like you were blood pressure is
One games.
Yeah, one case. Okay.
That's good. Host the twenty-five and twenty-seven Alberta Summer Games in twenty-eight. Okay.
Okay, get rid of twenty-seven Alberta Games. Yeah, there we go.
All right, Counselor Hughes, I accept that motion. Go ahead.
I think that we, uh, I don't think we can settle on a decision right now. And so I just think we just need some more time to think about it and bring it forward. I think that the general feel is that we'd like to do something in the future to put a bid forward. But there's obviously benefits and costs to either one, and let's just have a, a more budget when we come forward in this, not just limit the options just yet. I understand it's more work for admin, but you guys know that we just can't decide on this. Both have good points.
Yeah, I just want to add on to the last point by Counselor Hughes, and I appreciate it. I know you, you thought, you caught it in my questions. I, I just need additional information, because there's no doubt that, uh, I mean, these are different scales. And, uh, and they also require different levels of investment and, uh, offer different levels of return, as you've identified in the background report. I just need more information to determine what that benefit and what that return will be, uh, before I can make a decision. I mean, there's no doubt that Alberta, hosting the Alberta Games is, um, a bigger financial cost. But I think there's other long-term benefits that we saw when we posted previous ones that, uh, actually left a, a lasting legacy. Not only in facilities and grants, but also in, um, our communities. So, uh, I realize the impact that this could have. I mean, and potentially, like, you've identified Counselor Kilic with the number of volunteers that require. But we've also shown in the past that, uh, our, our community can, uh, come together and pull these things off in a grand scale, no matter, uh, which one we choose. So, thank you. I, 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 right now, I just want to thank administration for putting, uh, this forward. And also, uh, for willing to, uh, do the additional work required for both business cases.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, um, can we, when we look at this coming forward in the fall, like you have like first installment Alberta Games, two hundred and fifty-second, five eighty-five. You can give us an idea of where that money, like why we price it, just like that's the application bid. Or if there's other things that are involved in it, so that we also understand kind of the workload that may be involved in that to understand the comparisons. Um, and the other thing is just the logistics of it. I, I know we have a very dedicated community that loves to help. But we are asking for a huge commitment if we go the other way. So just about how the logistics could work out so that we move into this with success would be awesome. That's it.
All right, call for the vote.
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Awesome. Want your convention?
Hey, uh, good afternoon, council. So, uh, city administration has prepared.
Screen, Trevor. I was looking. I'm sitting there looking at the screen, I'm thinking, oh my gosh.
Looks so lifelike.
Avatar. Well, uh, yeah, anyways, it's, uh, my pleasure to present the administration's, uh, review of the, uh, twenty twenty-two Alberta municipalities resolutions package. So that's included within, uh, committee's agenda. Um, the resolution session, of course, is an important annual event in setting direction for Alberta municipalities and its ongoing advocacy efforts. This year, there's a total of seventeen resolutions, although a revised handbook is expected to be released this Friday. Within that, there's gonna be three special resolutions. This really concerns some of the business continuity with the name change from A U M A to Alberta municipalities. Um, city council has previously sponsored three resolutions and seconded two, though the temporary rental assistance benefit, um, resolution by council has been withdrawn. Given the government of Alberta's announcement, uh, earlier this summer that they've expanded, uh, the eligibility for that program. And now, uh, St. Albertans can apply to that. Um, so that'll be shown within the revised resolutions handbook to be distributed this Friday. I'm happy to take any questions from council regarding the, uh, analysis. Um, but it's been completed cross-functionally. And, uh, depending on the level of detail, might have to refer that to subject matter experts to get back to, uh, to council. But, uh, we are recommending that council's consideration for support for all the resolutions presented this year. For those that are attending convention next week. So happy to take any questions.
Sounds like I got a lot of work to do.
Yeah, you're, you're a primary spokesperson.
The, um, I just in relation to that, maybe the question not to you, Trevor, but to the mayor. With the recent kind of decision of Alberta municipalities and RMA to walk away from the LGFF funding. Thing, uh, joint submission, is there anything additional that? I mean, this is somewhat separate from that, because we're asking for one-to-one funding. We're not asking for LGFF. Is there something from the Alberta municipalities that we need to add to this, or is this more of a? This, this seems like a no-brainer, like one, you know, the B one provincial municipal revenue sharing.
That's just increasing the pot, isn't it?
Yeah, it's just one-to-one funding, page thirty-six. So, I mean, um, is there anything additional that we should be speaking to in relation to this, or is it just? Is it gonna be one of those ones that we've just singing it so that it just gets back on the, on to the, uh, resolutions? Because I was looking at, I'm sorry, I, I didn't scale all the way down. Alberta municipality's response to this one is what?
Um, yeah.
Sorry, I have to go to the
Generally, it seems to align with, with their advocacy efforts, but they don't have something active on the book that's seeking to span, to expand the, the pot, other than I think there was a member RFD, uh, a year or two ago. But resolutions are kind of given a higher priority, and they saw it as aligning with the upcoming provincial election and trying to get this kind of on.
Okay, so we're not gonna be at odds, or we're not gonna be at? Okay, yeah. No, no, this is good.
No, and, um, your question about the allocation of the pot?
Yeah.
I probably will speak to it. The membership is looking negotiations.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just for your knowledge, on Friday, we met with RMA and RMA walked away from the table. So I have to call Minister MacGyver tomorrow to let him know. So, and so for your information, they were, we came in with a proposal that would divide the pot up fairly similar to where it's currently. But up with MSI formula, cities were taking a bit of a cut, which I think you've got a presentation on. Um, RMA's proposal had all of the urban municipalities taking a fifteen percent cut. They were getting more of the pot than the urbans were. So we said, we just can't, we tried and they just said, no, so. Honestly, how could I speak to you guys and say you're gonna get fifteen percent less of an already reduced pot? So it was, they were, in my opinion, unreasonable and didn't really offer to stay at the table. Anyway, so I'll, I'll update the membership on, I gotta get my speaking notes on that one, so.
That's all. No, that's good.
Anyone else have questions? Who's, who's attending? You're attending?
Yeah.
Are you? Yeah, are you going, Natalie? No, is anyone else? So I'll invite you, are you guys gonna meet with your CMP?
Uh, we didn't, are we meeting there? I didn't say, I don't think we are.
I did, we didn't get a, an invite.
We didn't set up the meeting.
Feel like it's just
No, there's no need. I'll probably, I'll probably meet them for
But I, I will set up the meeting.
I'll get more done. Yeah, I'll see, absolutely. I want to talk to him about the graffiti on the bridge.
And real first.
Take pictures.
Yeah, and you don't have the special resol- resolutions in here at all, do you?
Uh, it's a very, no, they're
Yeah.
So they won't come during the resolution session, they'll come during the annual general meeting. And it's just simply the legal change of the name with registries, really. The brand is gonna stay Alberta municipalities forever, no matter what.
Just a one word. Who's seconding the B one?
Uh, City Veridri.
He's gonna do that, and then we're gonna do the other one.
Membership will second it.
Well, they probably won't have to speak to it. You probably won't even have to second it.
Yeah.
Especially we're doing, we're doing their transportation infrastructure funding. So, okay.
Awesome. Are you going down?
Yep.
Awesome. Okay. And you're there, right, Bill? Cool.
Yeah, I have no issues with your wording here so far, anyway.
I like getting this report, so I don't have to think about it when I vote. Yes. Uh, what music did they put for this? No idea.
Are you, you're speaking on the intermunicipal collaboration frame, framework?
I will just, just try to get, um, try to get the growth management boards back in, so we can use arbitration, so.
Beautiful.
Uh, right, you wanna make the motion, Ken?
Yeah, sure.
Go ahead.
Oh, I, I got up in front of me.
Thank you for the work, Trevor.
Yeah, it was, uh, very interesting. I always like to know what I'm reading.
Hundred and fifty hours of work, the ten minutes, one approval.
Yeah, but it's really have when you're there.
No, it's totally
Already, I'm ready. Counselor received his information, the attachment titled briefing note on twenty twenty-two Alberta municipalities resolutions.
All right.
No, thank you.
Call for the vote. That passes unanimously. Finally, I think this is still you, Trevor. Advocacy priorities.
We've gotten green dots.
Yeah, that's where you've been. Our priorities just
Hey, go ahead.
So, uh, yeah, uh, please to, uh, to present on this item. But really, uh, today is gonna be a facilitated, uh, conversation with, with council. So, so the purpose, uh, for setting advocacy priorities is to, to map out initiatives that are impacted by or rely on decisions of other orders of government. And it's important to, uh, to establish sort of communications prioritization and, uh, an alignment tool moving forward. It streamlines intergovernmental activities and then makes sort of the best, uh, use of, uh, council's available advocacy capital with other orders of government. So really, the, the desired outcome for today's discussion is consensus and prioritization on draft advocacy priorities in order to inform next steps from a tactical and implementation perspective. So in terms of what's been prepared for committee today, is, is the draft priorities included within your agenda package or really just intended to be a starting point for conversation? They've been pulled from council's, uh, strategic plan, the, uh, the focus areas that you've identified. And then from the corporate business plan, the, the initiatives that essentially interface with other orders of government. Um, the other bucket that the draft priorities may fall into is that their recent, uh, council policy positions that council has taken. So for example, on RCMP, um, and, uh, provincial policing. Um, so really, the approved council advocacy priorities serve as a foundation to develop appropriate engagement plans and tactics, um, moving forward. So for today's discussion, um, sort of the process, uh, wanting to guide councils, council through is future advocacy priorities. So while there's a few initiatives within the corporate business plan that are likely to engage with other orders of government at some point, they're kind of not in the project management, um, phase where there's gonna be sort of an active ask at this point. But once they're further along, um, there could be. Um, and then in terms of other advocacy priorities, is there anything that council feels should be taken out? Because it's not a priority, anything that should be added that's missed? And then sort of prioritize the top St. Albert specific asks. So the city essentially would be the primary spokesperson, where the primary people that are making that ask. It's not another, uh, advocacy association or, uh, or another sort of regional, um, entity. So in terms of those future advocacy priorities that I just, uh, mentioned, kind of the ones that we've, uh, put as placeholders in here is the investment attraction strategy. Really, there's not an active ask, uh, from the province, uh, with that just yet. But once that work is completed, there will be an opportunity to sort of incorporate that messaging and work with, uh, work with relevant stakeholders to, uh, to bring investment to St. Albert and to, uh, sort of target those key sectors. Um, for youth transitional housing, this is subject to the needs assessment and concept being, being completed. And community amenities as well, it's subject to concept planning being completed. Although, um, recreation and parks is going to continue to engage regional partners, um, as that work unfolds. But really, none of these are sort of where there'd be an active ask of, of another order of government at this point in time. Um, so maybe I'll just pause there and ask, uh, if council agrees that these are future. Um, and just sort of, uh, putting them as a holding pattern, um, at this point in time in terms of sort of active asks of, of government.
Well, I think one that we talked about earlier today was the V I conversation. So maybe just keep an eye on it. I think Nina said, but she said twenty-four, might wanna look at that. I didn't even know that was an issue.
And, and we'll come to, uh, an opportunity here to, or we've missed anything, we'll just get both to put that on a sticky note and we'll
Okay.
To the, to the list, so. I will take silence as authority to move forward.
Clarify, sorry, Trevor, uh, what you're, you're saying, you're, you're focusing on all three of those, or you're asking us which one?
No, not to do any of it.
Yeah.
Do anything on any of them.
We built these in the future.
Okay. Fine, thank you.
Is there anything around, and I was trying to find you, and maybe it's, it's covered in the intermunicipal partnerships around Vilnius Airport or around some of that area of hydrogen with, you know, with. And I am going to the, uh, AIHA on Thursday. I'm going to that conference.
Which, which ones are?
I'd see Albert, um, it's the industrial heartland.
The carbon?
Yeah, no, it's the, uh, one on hydrogen.
Okay. Thank you. Awesome.
I'm going in my role as the Vice Chair of the Alberta Capital Region.
Um, I, I think within the intermunicipal partnerships, that's more some of the, uh, the regional work that, that we're project managing that we're leading, uh, where we're not necessarily, um.
Okay, I agree, but I mean, is there an opportunity to look, and I'm not saying, I mean, we, do we have a slot for that? Or in the current, in our current priorities, or is there something that we should be looking at in relation to? Because it's tied into investment, it's tied into the whole conversation we had this morning.
So, so maybe I'll, if I put a, come back to that question, maybe Counselor Mackay. So I think, so this is the list of, uh, draft advocacy priorities that, uh, that administration has, has identified. These are created essentially from pulling from active corporate initiatives within the corporate business plan. Um, the ones that have been flagged in green would be ones that are sort of St. Albert specific asks. So we're the one, we're the primary entity that's, that's asking for these things. The, the transportation and infrastructure investment one, every year, the government of Alberta asks, um, the city, what are top transportation and infrastructure projects are with the intent that they might show up in budget. We didn't do any further analysis in terms of the, um, focus areas that are identified within council's strategic, um, plan. To say these are initiatives or advocacy asks we could be doing to better, um, achieve the desired outcomes, uh, within those strategic priorities. So I guess that's all, that's a roundabout, sort of long-winded way of answering your question. Though didn't take a look at any sort of that, uh, hydrogen economy or any of those pieces in terms of, uh.
Maybe they go into the futures where I was focused.
Okay, yeah. So there's anything we've missed, let's put it on a sticky note. there's anything we've missed, let's put it on a sticky note when, uh, when we get there and then, uh.
Oh, the sticky note. I'm just focused on the green dots.
Transit stuff that's missing, Wes?
Well, I see it there. I mean, there's a big, uh, big vote going on in Edmonton right now, so we'll see what happens there.
So, so maybe, yeah, we'll kind of get through our, through our process here. But, uh, in terms of the lists that's, that's on screen here, like, is there any questions from council? Uh, do you need any clarity on what these initiatives are?
I, I just need clarity. They're not rank ordered. They're just, they're all equally.
You want council to rank these shortly? Yeah.
I have one question, Trevor. What does mixed market housing development mean? Are we trying to get money for it? Or what are we trying to accomplish with mixed market housing development?
Yeah, that would be funding support for the twenty-two St. Thomas street development.
Okay. Got it.
And other, like, the temporary rental assistance benefit would have fallen into that.
Okay. Oh, all right. Thank you.
Uh, Trevor, I had a question around three point four actually in the report. Uh, it, there's two paragraphs. One is around the RCMP being maintained, uh, community policing services. And then the second part is around regional policing. I, I'm just wondering how those two play. And, I mean, from my information from the UCP, candidates are all uh, committed to ditching the RCMP and going with the, uh, regional policing. If that goes, how does that play with our regional policing thoughts?
So I think this is something we're, we're really hoping to sort of get councils, uh, direction on, one, in terms of priority, but then two, in terms of sort of how that rolls out. I think there's been, um, discussions at various points about, um, sort of trying to get ahead of the curve in terms of the regional policing narrative and how active do we as a city want to lead that conversation? I.e. through the EMRB or other, um, bilateral or, uh, multilateral discussions with neighbors to achieve that outcome.
Fair enough. Where would that, so how do you pivot then in relation to some of these advocacy priorities? Is there a possibility? Sorry to, sorry, Madam Mayor, I'm just jumping on
Committee.
sort of broad here. Uh, very good question. Uh, the, um, but the, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out how we, how, if in a changing environment, how do we pivot on all?
Yeah, so I guess i- in terms of today too, like, I think we were hoping to focus on sort of the what, then we could do some more.
Okay.
On, on that health.
Okay.
Um, again, not to reveal any sort of our strategic advantage or some of the tactics.
Good.
And the.
Good response. I just was trying to figure out if we had a process for pivoting and when that happens.
And I, I guess, you know, overall in terms of advocacy priorities, like, um, council sets the priorities, but again, depending on the governing party, like, things change and, you know, the Friday five o'clock announcement on here's what happened. They, um, that's where we'll need to be sort of flexible and that sort of thing, so.
Trevor, just, uh, would, would our long-term plan for getting provincial support for multi-use rec facility, especially with all the other pools that are closing and problems with our pool and et cetera, et cetera, would, would that fit under number three? Or or is that even something that would fit on our, on this list?
I, I think going back a couple, or this slide, um, in, in my mind anyways, sort of community amenities fell into that and is more sort of the future as, as, um, work on that unfolds. But I, you know, that's not to say that, that, uh, there, there hasn't been emergent things.
No, I think that, yeah, I'm struggling with this.
You know, what, what the, the approach Trevor's taking is that based on everything we know right now, and by the time that we get funding and stuff like that, it's a future project. Let's say the government of Canada and Alberta came forward and they said they got this great grant project, we'd pivot.
Okay.
Like that'd come back very quickly as a pivot.
Yeah, I just, I was concerned that it was off on the slide and then I thought, oh, boy, but we don't you know, planting the seed. This is something we need long term. We, we would be missing out on that future potential. Right?
I think if I, I could, but it's not, it's not an exclusive list in the sense that this, I, I think provides a common narrative for some key elements, but I, I could see the administration certainly underneath too is working on all those fronts.
Is there anything that we need to be aware of with changes to victim services legislation that we should be advocating for?
Um, I know that's one.
The regionalizing, but I, I'm not sure I completely understand what that means for St. Albert. Ken, you might know more.
Yeah, well, I, I, it, it should be on the list because it will have an impact, uh, on us, but it could be on the yellow sticky.
I gotta hear.
You got a blue sticky. Oh, sorry. Oh, you have blue stickies. You got blue stickies too.
So is there any other?
You got pink stickies. All right, I want yours. It goes with my hair.
So I think council's starting to move into the next. As we're just putting things.
When it's two o'clock.
So is there any other questions of clarity regarding the, the list on, on screen?
I just have one other question, like where you have Millennium Park, like, could that be anything? Could it be, uh, a building, an infrastructure?
Yeah, like, like I think right now it's, uh, you could almost visualize these as just having dollar signs beside them. It's, it's basically, and when we get into prioritization exercise, it's kind of like, um, leading up to the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four government of Alberta, uh, budget, sort of what are some of those being asked of, of the province? So.
What are the things they recently did change? And we got a memo on it was the community revitalization levy, which could use that form one.
So, so I heard a couple of ones that, that aren't on here. So maybe if we could take, uh, take a minute, uh, if, if there's any that council members feel are, are missing to write that on a sticky. And, uh, and then we'll just add them to the, uh, to the wall. We've got, and Counsel Jolly, if, if there's anything, if you could just message Christine in the, in the chat, that would be great.
Can I just get a photo of what kind of, I, I, it sounds like people have dots that they're putting on the boards?
Uh, we, we haven't gotten there yet, but, uh.
Is there someone who is able to, to email or text those to me? Just a photo of those?
I'll do it for you, Natalie.
Thanks so much.
Are they in the pocket?
No, the new ones you're, but you, you guys are scribbling away on. I'll just take a photo and want us to get up and sticky note now?
Yeah, so if you can get up, put the sticky note on, on the wall and then we'll come back to you to explain what the, uh, what the item is.
Did you put victim services?
Yeah, I did. Yeah.
Okay, well then I will. Oh, okay, well then they'll know. Where do they, do they go on the bottom of the third sticky?
And get them to find a specific.
Yeah.
If you know, Natalie, should we can find this money?
Yeah, yeah, he told me. He said we should have had a mug there for that.
Do you want me to put these anywhere? Writing stuff on sticky notes. I'm gonna take a picture of it. Like if you have other things that you think are advocating for. Like, for example, they have the concern about.
Province can use some of those, so we want to advocate for that.
I'm gonna take a photo of all this, so then with myself.
Was that finally keeping her, what?
Education property.
Yeah. Sky, but I see that this whole municipality are asking for it.
That's the same one. I think they just, that's just a place they just need to take.
Yeah.
Tell them to get it again at dinner. M and M's?
I, I don't take the M and M's. I take the M and M peanuts. I just scoop. Nope.
Natalie, I'm just waiting till they all get on the floor.
I'm gonna have to turn the light on there. That's they're renovating down on the main level.
Sounds like a drone go environment.
What are they doing on the main floor there? What are they, uh, renovating?
It's the accessible washroom.
That's good.
So we get the social media trip, nobody can eat.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, you almost have to put a different. And then. When you don't have that on.
But it's. The glass.
Yeah.
So it's different.
You know, we could do, like the glass that, uh, provincial center in Edmonton uses solar panel. From the big glass.
We using the little dots.
I don't know. It's gonna tell us.
So I'm going to just email it to all of council now.
Maybe not.
A little bit. I mean, this is exciting here, people, so.
Gets darker. Yeah, it gets covered.
Probably gets dark.
Now we should.
There could be higher efficiency.
Every little, every little bit.
That'd be really cool.
Probably not.
It's illegal.
Yeah.
I could probably stomach a waterfall.
With what happened in Edmonton.
So you're watching what's going on in Edmonton?
Technically, we should be.
Yeah, so. From Edmonton Journal has been.
I'm surprised there's not more people in. Every time I go by, I keep thinking some of the oxygen banning about is actually just taking that a little bit of coal, turned into a spray pad.
All supposed to be.
Yeah. No, I think that'd be a good idea. You can even extend it out even.
That's what I got in the paper that I got.
Oh, yeah. Rebecca said.
Just got a.
You know?
Got a.
I just sent everybody a picture.
I just.
Send it to you, David, if you want. I could send it to you, but I didn't know if it was like.
Do you want to add anything to it, Natalie?
No, a picture of the sticky notes.
Yeah, I just, yeah.
Hold on, just want to make sure Natalie has an opportunity to put her, her own sticky note up there.
No, I'm pretty happy. I mean, we kind of went over this all at strategic planning school. And even though sticky notes kind of fit in with, with other priorities, so.
What are you trying to quickly do, Trevor?
Uh, just add them to my, uh,
Okay.
So, yeah, my apologies.
No, no problem. Allows me to get to the green M and M's.
You know, we can all hear you. That was your outside.
Eat your red ones last.
You've been there because there's no one.
That song is still in my head. All right.
Okay. Okay, so kind of messily added in the bottom left there, that's, uh, that's all the stickies that, uh, that were, uh, listed there. So of the full list here, is there any that should not be on here? So they're not a priority for council to engage with federal, provincial or regional stakeholders on? So is there anything we should remove from this list?
Do they ever want to get rid of it?
Hey, can I ask a question there?
Yep.
Um, I don't understand, keep education property taxes.
That's me.
Okay.
Just so, you know, right now it's a transfer to the province and they give stuff back, so.
Yes. Yeah, that's the same. Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's fine. And amphitheater downtown, I don't know who put that, is that intended just to be the Millennium Park development? Like, is that?
I think Shelley says we should advocate for a piece of that project.
Yeah, because I mean, if we can get money for infrastructure, I mean, when we're looking at a plan that's like ten years down the road and tearing up downtown forever, why not get uh, infrastructure more readily is, is.
Okay, I'm just throwing out there. I'll, I'll, I'll put a, a dot next to Millennium Park, but to me it means like that would be kind of included down the line once we get into, to designs. Just whoever's reading this.
No.
Yeah, so actually on that note then, and th- thanks for the question, Counsel Jolly. So Counsel Bransky would be, would you be okay if we just wrap the amphitheater downtown in with the Millennium Park?
Um, that would be fine, except I saw Millennium Park as just a park when we did our tour the other day.
Okay. Okay.
What is IAHA?
Sorry, that's.
We're the Industrial Heartland Association.
I need that. I was just checking.
Because neither of us knew it.
So, yeah, so is there, is there anything to remove off of this list, council saying, don't, not a, not a St. Albert, uh, priority or concern right now?
I think the EPR is already going through, like the central producer responsibility, like from what I understand, it's, it's happening. So what are you looking at that's different than what's happening?
That was my sticky and I, I just wanted to make sure that it was. Attaching it. Moving, we can move it ahead faster. It seems to be. Every time I go on a call, it's like, we're gonna get it in twenty twenty-seven or the, you know.
They're starting it in the next, like, um, within the next year, it's starting to move in, just phasing it in is what the intention is. So I know that not all until then, but as far as I know, it's not. One of the regulations, they've been put off to the spring.
Yep.
I think that's correct.
Announcing the oversight body in October. Yeah. I, I, it should still be there until it's fully checked off and done.
Yeah. It just seems to be taken slow and so if we can keep it on the radar list to say, hey, this is a priority.
Whenever you tap.
Advocating for it.
Okay, so I'm not hearing that, uh, that any should be removed. I guess of the, of the new asks in the bottom left, does council feel any of these are a, a St. Albert specific ask? So we would be the, the primary spokesperson?
Are we just amphitheater?
Amphitheater is only one that I can.
Okay, um, I think then this moves us into our dot democracy exercise. So that's the purpose of the, uh, two green dots. Yeah.
I want to rank my ballot.
So, so the, uh, the hypothetical situation here is that you have thirty seconds. Ask for two things for the city of St. Albert from the government of Alberta. What would that be? So leading up to the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four provincial budget, if the province is looking to fund projects just prior to an election, what two projects would council like to see funded the most? Dirt. And so the, the preface with this is that all council advocacy priorities will be worked on, but really the, the top two to three have the most amount of dots. They become more foundational and consistent in, in the messaging and the tactics that get rolled out, um, kind of leading up to, uh, to a potential budget next spring. So, so that's kind of the thought, but this. So, so that's kind of the thought, but this, that's the intention of trying to to prioritize some of this. So, so I guess the the exercises, you've each been given two dots. If you could please place them on the St. Albert specific asks. So those are going to be the the asks that are identified in the top left paper over here, and Council Jolly will get you to message where you'd like your two dots placed to Christine in the chat. But I'll just point to where it is. I'm like facilitating in a hybrid situation. So it's this sheet right here is the St. Albert specific asks, and I'll just move the amphitheater to to Millennium Park right now, so.
Can I ask a question, Trevor, now that we, now that I didn't add anything to it? Is it possible to get funding for Lakeview from the province? Is there like any pool where they would say to help us to get the servicing done for Lakeview?
So there's there's not typical grant programs that exist for the upfronting of servicing. We'd be looking for an out of a gift where it's a true advocacy ask, is it something that's outside, similar to Ray Given, where we have a, an agreement of some kind?
I want, I want Lakeview. Add that.
That's game number one.
It's very small, over there, I can't read it. Okay.
At the very top.
Okay, well, I don't want to spoil it, are you? So what you've got up there, just for Natalie's sake, is page one oh seven, one oh nine, our agenda package. Okay. So it's just the St. Albert specific ones, Natalie.
So the only thing I'll add with Lakeview is that typically, we can't get grant funding for offsite levy projects. Like, anything that is recoverable from somewhere else, we typically can't get grant funding. There's probably, there's a portion of Lakeview that are our costs. So that's why we were able to get some funding for the Range Row two sixty work that we did, because some of it was our cost. But the offsite levy portion, they typically will grant them because we're going to collect that money back from developers.
Okay, well, I want my money covered. There's still lots of that in ours.
So there will be a portion of that, but probably not the whole.
I got my dot, Dex.
She was gonna message Christine.
I'm going down here, right here, right there.
Trevor, just to confirm.
Council Jolly, it's the, it's the items listed. Green on the. Message. The chat.
I put it on the top and I put my second one on the municipal funding.
So people are putting two dots on one row?
That's correct.
Double your dots on it. I thought we could choose.
The genie's giving me two wizards.
We mean, we have to put both of them up here?
But you know what? I'm putting it there anyway, and I'll just, well, you don't look like a genie of your folks.
I don't know how it got there. It must have been stuck on me. There were some, there were some abuse of the rules there, Trevor.
Bending.
Bending of your own.
Where it's supposed to be either, Trevor, but I put it where I thought it belonged. You got Natalie's?
But it's pretty clear where there's the priority.
Laptop.
I know, I just had to kill mine.
Longer, I thought. We're gonna be done pretty quick.
Yeah, I know. How was your battery?
It'll survive.
My timeline, when this.
That's of course, right here, the Jays game.
I was charging.
Hey, Trevor, what do we do with all our voting now? For Lakeview.
So there's just a a clear majority that that servicing to Lakeview is the, is the priority. A couple of dots on on Millennium Park, then a couple sort of rogue dots.
I resemble that remark.
So what what administration will do is we'll, we'll prepare kind of an agenda report for council's approval of the next council. Seeking council's approval for your advocacy priorities. And then, and really, council's given us direction to focus on a certain foundational component for, you know, the tactics and implementation. To support achieving the desired outcome there. So that'll be kind of foundational in terms of the the interaction with with government moving forward. And so that that I guess concludes the session, Trevor, unless there's any other questions.
In that, it is Lakeview clearly. Does it, you see a lane that is successful in lobbying with the provincial government for assistance in that area? Or are we asking for provincial lobbying on a impossible? Is there, there's something you can see that can help move that forward for us?
I'll, I'll, I'll try to, yeah, maybe answer this high level, because again, I don't want.
No, you're winging it.
I, I. But, you know, thirteen billion dollar projected surplus and then we're leading, leading up to a provincial election. Like, there's, there's opportunities for those political conversations to to occur.
Yeah, I just didn't want to set you out on an impossible.
If you always align your message to what base focuses are, then you have success. So right now, they're talking about jobs.
Yeah.
Yeah, jobs and economic growth and Lakeview is perfect for that.
That's good. That's what I was hoping to hear.
Yeah, and you can also find green.
So you don't need a motion coming out of this. It says no recommended motion. I don't think, I don't think we need anything because you're coming back, right? Most of come back to council.
On the nineteen.
Nineteen? I know I put my dot over there, rogue, as you called it, Trevor, it's fine, I won't hold it against you. Even didn't even hit the same sheet of paper she. But I just, I really think if Filniv has any chance of really getting significant progress, we're gonna need some additional funding sources. By a quarter here, because it's not in our area, but it does have potential for each, that kind of consequences to us if it was to actually become. That's what my logic was. Misunderstanding directions. Okay. Anything else on advocacy priorities, guys? It's you two on the nineteen. Just in time for us to speak to ministers down at Calgary. Awesome.
Hey. Do we have an agenda for why we're talking to Minister McHyver?
Coming out today. It's coming out today. Later today.
Right. That's Wednesday afternoon. All right, then, I think we're done. Meeting adjourned.